Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all of its people. Lord, we ask you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare prescribed and/or declarable conflicts of interest where relevant, and a requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting. Where applicable, councillors, can I also please remind you that the signing book will remain here in front of me and will not be passed around today. If you're... When you sign in, please come to this forward point. You'll also see another piece of paper here. That is an LGAQ anti-domestic violence pledge, which I would ask you to also sign. I have signed it, as have some other councillors. Please consider signing that. Councillors, are there any apologies? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I move that Councillor Griffiths and Councillor Johnston be granted leave of absence for today's meeting.
Seconded.
I have a motion proposed by Councillor Cassidy, seconded by Councillor Strunk, that the councillors Johnston and Griffiths be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye. And to the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Are there any other apologies?
Chair, I move that Councillor Cunningham, Councillor Marks and Councillor Maddick be granted leave of absence from today's meeting.
Seconded.
Yeah, okay. I have a motion proposed by Councillor Landers, seconded by Councillor Hutton, that the councillors Cunningham, Marks and Maddick be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. From today's meeting, all those in favour, please say aye. And to the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Are there any further apologies? A confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,644th special and the 4,645th ordinary meeting held on Tuesday, the 23rd of March 2021, be received, taken, as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor Landers, seconded by Councillor Hutton, the minutes of the 4,644th special and 4,645th ordinary meetings of council held on the 23rd of March 2021 be received, taken, as read and confirmed. All those in favour, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw your attention to the item on the agenda, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Landers.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, over the recess, we've heard some significant announcements in regard to Brisbane's bid for the Olympics and Paralympics in 2032. Can you update the chamber on these milestones?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Landers. And indeed, it is the exciting topic on everyone's lips at the moment, the progress that is being made towards our ambition of hosting the Olympic and Paralympic Games in 2032. And there has been substantial progress and developments made in recent weeks during the council recess. Now, first, I wanted to recap on why the Olympics. There are so many reasons. And when we debated these matters in the council chamber recently, those all were thoroughly covered by all sides of the chamber. But to recap, this is something that will generate, according to the state government's estimate, at least 130,000 jobs for our region and for our city. It's something that will help fast-track infrastructure. It is something that will give Brisbane, South East Queensland and the state of Queensland unprecedented international recognition, which will then help drive further tourism and investment decisions and boosting our local economy. And it will also generate countless supplier opportunities for local businesses as well. And this is something that is one of the most exciting parts of this opportunity, the opportunity for local businesses to be involved in tendering for games production, whether it comes to things like catering, whether it's the projects that are associated with the games, being involved in constructing them, whether it is involved in a whole range of business and supplier opportunities. There are countless opportunities for local business to benefit, and that also means local families benefit, local jobs benefits. And so it's a very exciting time for our city. Over the break, we saw some substantial progress made on the discussions around major venues. There had been talk, as councillors would be aware, about a number of different alternative locations for the main stadium for the Olympics. There was effectively three locations in the mix. One, and this is all information that's been publicly made available, one was at Albion, which would be the construction of a new stadium. One was the use of the Carrara Stadium on the Gold Coast for the main opening and closing ceremony, and the other was the Gabba. So those three were in the mix, and during the break, that was narrowed down to the Gabba being the preferred option. And so it's good that we've got that decision that's been made, and it's one that's supported by all three levels of government. What else is exciting is the opportunities that come with that, the opportunities that we'll see, first of all, federal funding flowing through to Queensland, flowing through to Brisbane. The federal government's recent announcement on funding represents a far more advantageous and generous arrangement than we saw with the Sydney Olympics. To be funding Olympic-related infrastructure and facilities 50-50 between the state and federal government, that is a massive win for Queensland, a massive win for South East Queensland and a massive win for Brisbane. We know that the Gabba stadium requires a significant upgrade. We know that as time has moved on, that stadium is no longer fit for the role that it is performing and meeting the expectations that are placed on it. And so the state government was already in the mix, looking at upgrade opportunities for the Gabba. This provides the impetus for that work to happen and for it to be funded in a fair manner between both the federal government and the state government. So that is a positive thing. But it also means that the heart of the Olympic Games would be just a stone's throw away from Brisbane City, walking distance, accessible by fantastic public transport and accessible from all parts of Brisbane. And it would also see that iconic heart of Brisbane cricket, Queensland cricket, and also AFL being given a substantial upgrade and improvement. It also means that we won't be left with white elephants that will not be used. And that was one of the concerns both of the IOC and of all three partners in this arrangement. We don't want to create 100,000-seat stadium, which we fill once and then are not able to fill on a regular basis. That's sadly what happened in many other places. That will not happen here in Brisbane if we get the games. We will have facilities that will get ongoing use. They'll get ongoing use for decades and decades. They'll be easily accessible by public and active transport, and I think it'd be a massive win if we get the games and the heart of those games being held right close to the city in the Gabba.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Any further questions? Councillor Cook. Councillor Cook, just... Welcome. I can't... Can you just... I can't hear you. Sorry. I'm just having trouble with Councillor Cook's audio. Councillor Cook, could you please unmute yourself?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But yeah, please, Councillor Cook, please proceed with your question.
Thank you. My question is for the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, today is a historic day, as it is the first hybrid meeting of Brisbane City Council. There is no doubt that hybrid meetings are a first step in providing greater participation and flexibility for councillors who, for a range of reasons, may not be able to attend council and committee meetings in person. Lord Mayor, can you please advise the chamber what other steps, if any, you are taking to support greater participation and flexibility, particularly for new parents as councillors in this place?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Cook, for the question. And we appreciate your participation hybridly in this meeting and very proud to be the Lord Mayor that introduced and facilitated hybrid meetings. Very proud to be the Lord Mayor that leads this council at a time when three of our elected female councillors will be having new babies, two already been born. And congratulations to Councillor Fiona Cunningham on the birth of her son, Franklin. And we're looking forward to the third arrival later on this year. So this is a time like no other in the city's history, where we have three births effectively, or three babies born to sitting councillors in the one year. And it is a fantastic thing, and it is something that I'm proud we are able to support. And I know that if you look at other examples of what's happened, when you come to, say, other parliaments, we have a look at some examples where we can potentially learn from them as well. And so, Councillor Cook, I'm happy to confirm today that we will be moving forward to introduce family-friendly hours into Brisbane City Council sitting times. We know this is something that you will support fulsomely, and we know that we expect to have all councillors supporting this. This will be part of the changes to the meeting's local law that will be coming forward, which I have previously flagged regarding other issues. But these sort of things are important for the parents of young children in particular, or in fact, the councillors that may be involved in caring for a relative, maybe an elderly relative. And so that flexibility is something that is really important for us to make sure that we can effectively go forward and serve the people of Brisbane, but have the flexibility required to make sure that we can do that job in a flexible way. Now, the state government has introduced family-friendly sitting hours for their parliament, and I look forward to having family-friendly council chamber sitting hours going forward as part of that new local law review. It is really important that we support the parents in our team with that flexibility, and we want them to be able to participate in the democratic process. And everything that we've done to date indicates that this is what we do. We have introduced this technology. It is working today, and it is a historic day for the city. And we have no doubt that that technology will be one of many things that we will continue to do to adapt, to make sure that we support those working parents in our team with the flexibility they need to do their job and to serve the people of Brisbane, but also to meet their obligations as part of a family, and that is an important thing. So thank you for the question, Councillor Cook. I appreciate that question and look forward to your wholehearted and fulsome support for family-friendly council chamber hours.
Further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Order, Mr. Chair.
A point of order, Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the suspension of standing orders to allow me to move the following urgency motion, that Brisbane City Council advocate for and immediately take the necessary steps to introduce parental leave for councillors.
Seconded.
Councillor... Yeah, so I have a resolution proposed by Councillor Cook, seconded by Councillor Cassidy. Councillor Cook, you may have been absent, but I have insisted in the past for this to be distributed in writing. Are you able to do that at this time?
Thank you. It's been emailed through to the clerk.
Thank you. Oh, that will be passed forward to all councillors. Councillor Cook, on the topic... On the matter of urgency, could you please discuss your urgency resolution in three minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is urgent, as the Lord Mayor has just said, and as I have noted today, it's historic in being the first time this council has convened via a hybrid model. As most councillors are aware, I had my third child, three and a bit months ago, and had initiated the need for hybrid meetings in this place, not only for my benefit, but to help others in this place who may be councillors now or in the future, and for a variety of reasons may not be able to physically attend the chamber for council and committee meetings so that we can improve accessibility and diversity in this place. But Chair, this urgency motion today is about taking further steps to ensure greater participation, particularly for those who are or wish to be parents in this place, not in the interests of just those who sit here now, but for those who may wish to seek elected office in the future. Mr. Chair, this is urgent because council does not currently have any parental leave arrangements in place for councillors. This is urgent because, as the Lord Mayor has rightly pointed out, we have three councillors in this place who have or will give birth this year. It is urgent because we've already seen the shortcomings of the current arrangements in this place whereby I was removed from a council committee whilst I was away having my baby and was later reinstated on the basis of procedural rules that require apologies on a weekly basis whilst sitting in council. It is urgent because we must ensure that our processes and procedures reflect modern workplaces and facilitate the way in which council is operated. It is also urgent because other states like South Australia have already acknowledged these shortcomings and have recently taken steps to introduce 20 weeks of maternity leave for their MPs. Mr. Chair, I appreciate this motion is not completely within Brisbane City Council's control. It will require council initiating conversations with the state government to ensure that the relevant legislation is appropriately amended and that council processes, procedures and standing orders are also changed to allow parental leave for councillors. Chair, having just gone through the process of having a baby whilst a sitting councillor, I can also say that this is urgent to ensure the diversity of this chamber and that the desire to have a family does not act as a barrier to those who may seek appointment to political office as a councillor in this place. I ask all councillors to support this motion that Brisbane City Council advocate for and immediately take the necessary steps to introduce parental leave for councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now put that resolution on the matter of urgency. All those in favour of urgency, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cook, if you would please move that resolution and then speak to that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that Brisbane City Council advocate for and immediately take the necessary steps to introduce parental leave for councillors.
Seconded.
The resolution as read has been proposed by Councillor Cook, seconded by Councillor Cassidy. I trust all councillors have received it by now. Councillor Cook, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank the chamber for their support on this matter. Mr. Chair, as we have heard from the Lord Mayor today, this is an issue that this year in 2021 has been unique, I guess, to Brisbane City Council. Having three current sitting councillors in this place, having babies this year, has highlighted some of the potential shortcomings with our current rules and procedures. I think that this motion today will show the support of council as a whole in allowing our workplace to be more family-friendly. As I said, we have seen in South Australia, parliament has recently introduced 20 weeks of maternity leave there. Mr. Chair, that is to reflect the public service in that place, and I would suggest that when it comes to council, that our provisions should reflect those of council employees as well. Members also in South Australia can now bring young children into the place without actually having to specifically ask the permission of council to do so. They do not now need the permission of the Chair of Council to take those steps. This is something else that in Brisbane City Council, our rules and procedures should be amended to reflect that if a person wishes to bring a young child into their workplace to either breast or bottle-feed their baby, they should be able to do so. Further amendment of the rules and standing orders around things like the requirement for apologies on a weekly basis need to be upgraded to reflect modern workplaces. It should be the case that councillors can provide a request to take leave for a period of time and not have to make weekly requests for apologies to be made by their colleagues. The current makeup of council, of course, has reflected the fact that I have Labour colleagues and there are Liberal colleagues who will be able to, at the present time, make those apologies, but there may be circumstances in the future that does not provide that. So I think that amending those rules to ensure we do not have circumstances like what we saw whilst I was on my leave, where I was effectively removed from a committee, and I thank the chamber for seeing sense and reinstating me on that committee, and specifically Councillor Adams for the steps that she took to ensure that occurred. And I appreciate that at the time, Councillor Adams was acting within the provisions of the rules that she has been provided, but we need to acknowledge that perhaps the rules need to change. And this is a chance for our council to stand up and to say that we do need parental leave provisions brought in to this place so that parents can be encouraged to take their place in the chamber and can be encouraged to stand for political office in circumstances where they may not otherwise if they are considering having a family. So, Mr. Chair, I would encourage all councillors in this place to support this motion today. I appreciate that it will take liaison with the state government. I appreciate that people may have different views about the place of young parents in council, but certainly, Chair, my personal view is that for parents to have the opportunity to not only represent their community, but also to have a family and to be supported in doing that and seeking political office, it's an incredibly important thing, and our council will only be richer for it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, this is an interesting situation that we've been presented with today because I'm really not sure where Councillor Cook is coming from here in suggesting that there's no flexibility or not enough flexibility for parents of young children. Councillor Cook knows full well that she is able, as a sitting councillor, to take as much time as she wants, as is anyone here, and all that has to happen is that one of her colleagues has to put in an apology at a meeting. She can even do it herself, Mr. Chair, with a written notification through to yourself or through to anyone in this team. So the idea that there's some kind of limiting factor here is just not the case. And I'm speaking from memory here, but in about the last six months, Councillor Cook has been the greatest example of that flexibility that exists because I can only remember her being present at one or two meetings in the last six months of council. So the flexibility is there already, and that's fine. We don't begrudge anyone taking that time to be with their young family. So I understand that the last time Councillor Cook was at a meeting, or one of the last times, was the 3rd of November, and then there was a brief appearance, I think, one time since then, and then we see today. So that flexibility is already there, and Councillor Cook knows that because she has been able to take advantage of that flexibility. And right now, Councillor Fiona Cunningham, the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, is taking advantage of that flexibility. And all it took was an apology to be put in today. There's no problem. No one is raising objections to this. No one is making it difficult. That flexibility exists. Now, there's something perverse that could come out of this motion if we're not careful. At the moment, there is no limit on the amount of time or flexibility that a councillor can access, no limit. Now, really, that limit at the moment is simply a councillor's own desire to want to serve their community. But theoretically, you could take an unlimited amount of time away from this council chamber. You could take an unlimited amount of time away from your office. There is no limit on that. And really, as I said, the only limit that exists at the moment is a councillor's own desire to be wanting to do the job and to serve their community. It's interesting because technically, if you look at the law, Brisbane City councillors are not employees of council, which means that we do not have the same employment arrangements as council staff. Now, that has its pros and cons. In one sense, it gives us that flexibility, which is a pro. It gives Councillor Cook the flexibility to take the time that she has needed. That's a pro. On the other hand, we don't have entitlements such as long service leave, for example. We don't have severance pay. I think there is some conditions under which councillors that lose election may get access to a small amount, but a lot of other employee benefits and entitlements that council officers get access to, we do not have because we are not classed as employees under law of the Brisbane City Council. And so if we were to arrange for a specific period of parental leave, as is suggested in this motion, you would actually be limiting the amount of flexibility and the amount of time that can be taken by a councillor. And I'm not sure that that is the desired intent here. So we propose to move an amendment to this motion just to reflect this situation that I've raised and not to adversely impact on the flexibility that exists already. So I propose that the amended motion, Mr. Chair, reads that Brisbane City Council supports all councillors to continue to have parental leave at their discretion.
Seconded.
I have an amendment posed by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Lord Mayor, I trust that amendment will be distributed momentarily? Hard copy's going around, okay. So, sorry, a hard copy is being distributed at the moment. Lord Mayor, on an amendment, you have 10 minutes.
Oh, look, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't intend to take anything like that, just to point out that we don't want to jeopardise that flexibility that already exists by putting a limit on it. So if there was, say, theoretically, a formal paid parental leave or councillor parental leave process of maybe three months, that may well limit the amount of time that a councillor can take. So if they need four months, they would not be able to take that. At the moment, it is at their discretion how much time that they take, and that is, I think, the appropriate flexibility. So Councillor Cook's motion, while well-intentioned, actually seeks to limit the flexibility that councillors get access to. Now, I don't think that she intended to do that, Mr. Chair. I think that this was an oversight or an unintended consequence, but we are happy to work in a bipartisan way just to make sure that this motion does not limit the flexibility of councillors when it comes to their own personal arrangements, whether that is carer's arrangements or whether it's parenting arrangements, family commitments. We know that councillors all work hard. We know that councillors are committed to their job, and I say this across all parties and representatives in this place. We might disagree on things, but I know that all councillors are committed to their job. They're committed to their work, they're committed to their constituents. And there is a tendency to work far harder rather than the opposite. That is the tendency here. There is a tendency to deny ourselves from leave that maybe employees might otherwise take because we are committed to our work. And I think that the flexibility that we have at the moment works well. It works well, and I wouldn't want to see that flexibility limited by the motion that Councillor Cook put up. So this particular amendment just reflects that there is flexibility for parental leave at councillors' discretion, and I urge councillors to support this amendment.
Further speakers to the amendment? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks to Councillor Cook for bringing the original motion. I guess perhaps what the mayor has overlooked or missed here is that when a councillor takes extended leave, such as for parental leave, there's no one there directly filling in for their job. And I think that's probably the core issue when you think about it. I see no reason with changing the general rule that councillors can take as much leave as they feel they need. I understand what the mayor's saying on that front, but there is a specific problem there where if a councillor wants to take a couple of months leave, which I think is perfectly reasonable when they've had a child, that the work just piles up and no one's actually, apart from the ward office staff, no one's really filling in for that role of some of the decision-making a councillor might ordinarily make. Perhaps a simple workaround would be to allocate temporary staff, for example, an extra ward officer allocation or an additional staffer to the ward office for the period that the councillor is away, and maybe that's something that can be time-bound. So, for example, a councillor might be eligible for a couple of months, fill-in by a paid ward advisor, and then if they need more time off, then that's not backfilled. But I'm not sure if Councillor Adams is following this as well. It doesn't seem like they're really listening to me, but I'm offering this as a genuine suggestion because it's... No one's concerned about the fact that councillors can take leave, but it's really the concern that the work would just pile up, and so the more time they take off, the more work there is for them to do when they get back. And perhaps a simple workaround would simply be to be actually allocating staff in... I understand that there have been times in the past when if councillors have stepped down and triggered a by-election and there's an extended period without a councillor, there's a mechanism to appoint an administrator. a mechanism to appoint an administrator or something along those lines, and that's perhaps another model or mechanism that could work. Obviously, there are some decisions that only a councillor themselves can make and which can't easily be delegated to other staff. But certainly, there is some work that I do as a councillor that could also be done by a ward advisor. And maybe there's a middle ground there where we can allocate some extra staffing capacity for the times that councillors are away, because otherwise their inbox is just filling up with work, there's a backlog of submissions to write, et cetera, et cetera. And so, taking leave isn't really taking leave because you've just got even more work when you come back. So, I offer that as a genuine suggestion in good faith to the mayor and the administration. And perhaps that addresses some of councillor Cook's concerns as well, which is that, yeah, we can take leave right now, but without any staff in backfill, it's not really genuine leave because that capacity isn't being filled.
Further speakers to the amendment? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I stand to support this amendment. And I was listening, councillor Sri. I can, I'm a woman, I can listen and talk at the same time. Because I have been on parental leave, I have been on maternity leave, and I can understand the intent of councillor Cook's motion today, absolutely. But I have to say that we have the most generous, flexible leave arrangements as local councillors in this place of many, many workplaces across the city, let alone across the country. Because I can assure you, first of all, I doubt there's many of your councillors in this place, councillor Sri, that would agree to an administrator taking over while they're on any type of leave, whether that's parental, long service, or any other type of leave, for many different reasons, doesn't really support the democratic process. And I can assure you, there is plenty of people in what some people like to call the real world out there, but plenty of people in the workplace, that when they take parental leave, when they come back, it's piled up on their desk waiting for them. That is the reality of work life, not just a councillor. But however, we do have a lot of flexibility in this place to take the leave time that we have needed. Councillor Cook is the first one in this term to have a bouncing baby while they're sitting in, but not the first person to have a bouncing baby while they're actually in this place. And as it was councillor Sutton was in this place and had two children her time here in office, the first one as the leader of the opposition, as the leader of the opposition. And as the leader of the opposition, she took her parental leave and she took nine months full leave, with the greatest respect to Shane, tapped out and took the time to be with her family. That was her decision. And that was the opportunity that she took, as every one of us can take in this place. And whether it's a foot operation for councillors or whether it's a heart operation for former councillor Wyndham, or it's parental leave, or it's time-out holidays, obviously, we fit them around chambers. That's what should be expected. Some people, not so much occasionally. However, we have a lot of flexibility. We support parental leave for anyone in this place. At their discretion, they have that flexibility to do that. I think taking the next step to formalise that, there's a line that's been put up against me by councillor Cassidy, so I won't repeat it, but it could lead to unintended consequences on other leave that was not the intent of this motion. So, I fully support councillor Cook in taking all the time that she needs for her parental leave and any other person in this place, councillor Cunningham, again, congratulations to her. And we support, as this motion says, the parental leave for all councillors, but we don't believe a taking a legitimate step is the way to go. But thank you, Lord Mayor, for announcing and confirming today that parent-friendly hours are on their way. Thank you.
Further speakers to the amendment? Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just in relation to the amendment, I think that the Lord Mayor may have missed the point a little bit around the intent of the original motion. So, the original motion was to take the steps necessary to introduce parental leave. Of course, that opens up the examination of all of the rules, processes, procedures that are currently in place in this place that may act as a barrier to taking that leave. So, as councillor Sri has already flagged, there are other issues in terms of the resourcing of ward offices. There are other issues in terms of the procedure of council. We have to seek an apology. It is voted upon by council. I'm not trying to limit the time through the original motion. If a time period was provided by council, of course, councillors could make application for a further apology at another time. What it does do, though, is provides certainty for the councillor to be able to leave the council chamber and know that there are no processes or procedures that will inhibit or restrict them whilst they are on leave. As I pointed out, there are currently procedures in place that, if not strictly follow, allow for the removal of councillors from committee and, to be fair, Mr Chair, allow for their removal as a councillor. If you are absent without an apology for consecutive meetings of council, you will be removed as the councillor. Now, that is restrictive, that is prohibitive. We need to review the processes and procedures through a motion like this in this place that we take the steps to introduce parental leave, which will open up a discussion about all of those things. We know that everyone in the place supports parental leave for all councillors, as the Lord Mayor has said. Of course, we support parental leave. I think that there is bipartisan support on that issue. But this is broader than that. This is, and I take what councillor Adams has said, she doesn't think that this requires legislative change. It does. It does require those changes to be made so that we can make sure that council is truly an inclusive workplace for all parents and so that they can feel that they can seek collective office, knowing that there are those protections in place. The current council makeup and administration of this place reflects 19 LMP councillors, an LMP mayor, five Labour, one independent, and one Green. That will not always be the makeup in this place. And it is possible that councillors could not be supported in seeking to be absent from the council chamber and committees resulting in their removal. It is time that we review those processes and procedures. It's time that we move towards having parental leave for those councillors who wish to take it. It is not prohibitive, it is not restrictive. Councillors will always be able to seek an apology from meetings. That is not what this is trying to do. It is a very specific requirement for parental leave, and we will, of course, support parental leave for all councillors, but that was not the intention of the original motion. Thank you.
Further speakers on the amendment? No further speakers on the amendment, the Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Just briefly, I did want to address one issue that has come up again with councillor Cook's comments just before. We are, as I mentioned, in the process of amending the or drafting a change to the local law. That change relates to the meeting's local law. That change, I flagged, will have more time for people to put notified motions in so that we have less fake urgency motions. But the change will also include a provision for more family-friendly sitting hours of council. But I can confirm that we are absolutely willing and able and receptive to making sure that councillors don't have to put in an apology every single week if they're going on an extended period of leave. So, we are absolutely happy to have a standing apology. So, it could be the case that an apology once lasts for a period of many months. That's okay. And I understand we've done that in the past with councillor Sutton when she was here. So, that is something that I think we should make sure is enshrined so that you don't necessarily have to put in an apology every week, which is one of the hurdles that councillor Cook was talking about. And look, there is another way we could look at this as well to provide some surety. Councillor Cook referred to the fact that, you know, the balance or the mix or the numbers in the chamber could deny a councillor potentially from putting in leave, or a councillor could deny a request for leave. I'm happy to have that looked at as well. It may be the case that the request for leave is submitted directly to the Chair of Council, and that's the approval process as opposed to councillors voting on whether that leave is accepted or not. So, there's a few things that we can do, I think, to tidy this up, to make sure that the concerns raised are addressed, and I'm certainly happy to have a look at those issues. That way, any of the concerns raised by councillor Cook can be addressed and we can keep that flexibility that we already have. I don't want to see a situation where someone is by vote of this council denied the opportunity to have leave. I don't think that would be a fair outcome. I certainly have never seen that happen before in this place in 15 years as a councillor. But, having said that, it's a fair point to raise, and we need to make sure that something like that doesn't happen in the future. And so, let's have a look at how we can change the meeting's local law to make sure that if someone's putting an illegitimate apology through the process by the Chair, then that's something that's accepted and not a matter for debate. So, just wanted to flag, we'll have a look at that as well in the change to the local law. And I certainly do hope we'll get unanimous support for this motion.
Thank you. Now, put the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by, is that the mayor?
Seconded.
Seconded by the Lord Mayor, please ring the bells.
I said no. I said no. Not looking at everything that they know, I mean. Oh, they weren't expecting to debate this anyway.
Councillors, all councillors are present. Deputy Mayor, can I just get you to turn your, all councillors are present, so we'll proceed to the vote by show of hands. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
No.
Councillor Sri, you, you're a no, councillor Sri's a no. Colax, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and five against.
The ayes have it. We will now proceed to further debate on the new amended motion. Is there further debate on the amended motion? Councillor Sri.
It's a pretty nothing motion now, to be honest. It doesn't really say much, and I don't really understand why we had to have the amendment. But just really quickly on the broader topic that the mayor spoke to, when we're talking about family-friendly hours, it would be great to also have a serious conversation about changing the committee meetings so that they can run a bit longer and are perhaps on another day. I don't see why we can't start the general council meeting one day in the morning and have longer committee meetings on another day of the week so that we can actually get some substantive work and some longer discussions during those committee meetings. I think pretty much every committee I've ever sat on regularly runs out of time in general business, and there's a lot of stuff that we don't get time to discuss. And so, I think if those committees are to be able to make meaningful decisions and to have legitimacy in the eyes of the public, I think it's important they run a little bit longer because right now there's not enough time to discuss the substantive issues that come up in committees. So, again, I don't need a response on that now, but I want to leave that with the Lord Mayor to consider and reflect on. What is the point of committees if 25 minutes of a 30-minute committee is taken up by a fairly fluffy presentation and we don't actually have time for substantive discussion? No offence to any of the committee chairs.
Further speakers to the amended motion? Anyone at all? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, Chair. The amendment that the Lord Mayor just moved and what the motion now reads is for no change whatsoever. And the Lord Mayor seems to be claiming that there is just this unlimited leave, and he described situations where councillors could be absent from their ward offices if they wanted to for an unlimited period of time, and the original motion, the original motion would not have had anything to do with that. What the, what the original motion that councillor Cook moved was specifically around the requirement for a councillor to receive a leave of absence from a council meeting and committee meetings, and if they're not granted those currently, the Lord Mayor can get up and say, of course, he and any LMP councillor will honour that commitment that he gave, that they will vote in favour of apologies. But we know, you know, many of the commitments this Lord Mayor makes, he doesn't keep. So, what councillor Cook's original motion was designed to do was to provide that safety net for councillors that required to take some leave, to know that they could continue in this job, and that would be in addition to those arrangements. So, I think what the Lord Mayor did there was use a lot of weasel words to get out of making or advocating, and that's what the motion was about, advocating for change in this place to make it more family-friendly. So, what we have before us now, what we're voting on is a motion to say, pat on the back to the LMP, no change required here in this council chamber. We know, we know that they have form back in the, in the joint administration days in denying a councillor, a pair, and a closely, a council that had much closer numbers back then when that councillor took leave when she had a baby. So, so what this motion was all about, what this motion was all about was ensuring, I think it might have been before your time, Chair, what this, what this motion, you look a little confused, what this motion, and, don't worry, it happened, what this motion was about was providing that certainty, that certainty to councillors who wanted and needed to take that leave. At the moment, a political decision is being made by LMP councillors, whether a councillor in the minority gets to have leave or not, for any reason, whether it's parental leave or sick leave or any leave like that. And I think councillor Cook's motion was a great one to advocate for and seek those changes, to have that conversation because it would require change at other levels of government as well. But what we have from the Lord Mayor again is, is no progress and no change and keeping all the power in his and his LMP colleagues' hands, and I don't think that's a good thing for democracy in this place, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I've already spoken pretty extensively on these matters.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, councillor Cook, I just have to check something. I'm sorry, councillor Cook, you've already spoken to the, on this matter, and although the resolution's been amended, the way the rules work means that you've already spoken on the, on the matter before us. Are there any further speakers? Right. There being no further speakers, and because it's an amended motion, there is no right of reply, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it? The ayes have it? There is no division, we'll move on. We're now returned to question time. There is quite a deal of it left. I believe councillor Hammond was about to ask a question. Councillor Hammond?
I was, thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, the Sandgate Plan will next week go out for the second round of consult, um, community consultation, following initial feedback from residents and the state government. Can you please update the chamber on the next steps?
The deputy mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hammond, for the question, and it has been quite a journey to get here to where we are today for the Sandgate Neighbourhood Plan. And we have been working closely with the local community for around two years now to develop a plan that protects the things that people love most about this area and will also revitalise the local economy, create more jobs, and provide greater housing choice. The existing neighbourhood plan has been in place since 2000, and a lot has changed in those 21 years, particularly my babies from when I had parental leave at that time. And over the last few decades in Brisbane alone, the community felt their refresh was needed. It is a growing city, and even though Sandgate is right there on the outskirts and our beautiful northern beaches, it is an area that is going to continue to grow over the next 10 years and beyond. So, this was launched in 2019, together with the community developed a draft strategy for the feedback. And as I've said here many, many times before, the reason we developed the draft strategy is to introduce and test ideas early in the project so the community have the chance to say what they like, what they don't like, and redefine the concepts and build on those for a consensus for that shared vision. There was clear themes that came out in the first round of consultation, enhance the local character, provide more opportunities for people to live by the bay, revitalise the local economy and support local businesses, and protect and celebrate the natural environment. So, the population is not expected to grow that much. So the population is not expected to grow that much over the coming decades, but we do expect to see significant changes to the community profile in the bay region. It's an ageing population coupled with more young families moving to the area, meaning we needed more affordable and accessible housing, particularly those close to services and transport. The town centre, while it's rich in its history and its character, was also crying out for some attention and a bit of a boost to that local economy. So it really was a no-planer to make sure we had some growth around that town centre, to make sure the businesses could stay on their feet, get back on their feet after last year now, more importantly, but also protect the unique neighbourhood character that these quiet bayside streets have as well. The vision, the first concept that went out, was for six-storey heights in the centre with a mix of ground-floor retail and dining, some commercial office and residential on top, a place for people to live, work and play. But the vision did draw mixed reactions. There was some support of the plan as they recognised the benefit to local businesses and the community would bring, but in the end it was not a favourable proposal with around 30% of the nearly 700 submissions opposing the increased height, concerned about losing that village feel with six stories. Again, that's the reason we sent out a draft and a vision strategy to test the ideas early on. The next version released for consultation next week will clip the building heights to a maximum of four stories in the town centre, with the exception of Lagoon Street Subprecinct located directly across from the train station, which proposes building heights up to five stories. We feel that this is a balanced approach to meet the needs of the growing community while protecting the look and the feel of the area. There was an extensive audit of the heritage and the character houses, which now sees more than 500 properties added to character zoning and traditional character overlays. An additional 20 properties are being heritage listed. The plan has been reviewed by the state government, who have also taken a keen interest in supply for housing in the area, including the social housing portfolio and how this will be affected. They have identified 11 state-owned properties of interest in this area, mostly old three-story social housing blocks located along Flinders Parade between the foreshore and the town centre. These are situated amongst some of the most beautiful traditional streetscapes that have largely remained intact with beautiful Queenslanders. And while we do agree that we need to be more housing diversity suitable for residents at all stage at life, we absolutely do not believe this should be to the detriment of our traditional character neighbourhoods. Unfortunately, it appears the state government do not share the same view and has rejected our proposal to convert these properties from what is currently low-medium density to character zoning. But the plan has been conditioned, and it will be going out to the community for their feedback on this new proposal. The draft plan is out for public consultation from next Tuesday through to the 21st of June, and we encourage everybody to have their say on this important, beautiful part of the city.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, residents in the Inogra Ward have been campaigning against a plan to redevelop the Inogra Creek Sports and Recreation Precinct that was forced upon them. This LMP council yet again has not conducted any genuine consultation with residents. Documents the community has obtained through a formal right-to-information application prove that. You can't tell residents something is happening just by bashing a few stakes in the ground with plans attached to them. So Chair, what I would like to know is how much money has been spent and how much time has been wasted developing this plan, which is flawed because this LMP administration has completely failed to consult the community.
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, through you, councillor Cassidy, for the question. Well, I can say upfront, not one dollar, not one cent has been wasted in developing a draft proposal and a plan for consultation to the local community. And I'll tell you, the only waste that's been going on here is the political game-playing that the Labour opposition and various other councillors have been playing. That is a waste of everyone's time and effort in order to score some cheap political points in an issue they simply don't understand and are just looking from a one-eyed party political viewpoint. What we have here is a precinct that is one of the premier sporting precincts in Brisbane, and in fact, the premier women's sporting precinct in our city. And it is an area that is so popular, that is literally bursting at the seams. We have something like 11 different lessies operating across the precinct, across a range of different sports, and I know, and you know, Mr Chair, that for well over a decade, the community has been calling for a plan, a coordinated long-term plan for that precinct, because they have been concerned that as the different sporting facilities grow in popularity, as more people come into the precinct to play sport, that there's challenges like parking that need to be resolved, and that the various competing uses of the site need to be managed. Now, that is a reasonable request for the community to make, and we have responded by putting in the work to come up with a proposal so that we can go out to a fulsome community consultation process. I always think it is sadly ironic when we are conducting consultation and everyone has the opportunity to have their say, yet people say, oh, there's been no consultation. And this is exactly what we saw with the Inogra Creek precinct. We were doing consultation, yet while we were doing consultation, you had the politically motivated Labour team...
Councillors, please allow the Lord Mayor's answer to be heard. Councillors, please allow the Lord Mayor's answer to be heard in silence. The Lord Mayor.
The politically motivated Labour team trying to fan the flames when the reality is consultation is exactly what we've been doing. And I'm pleased to confirm today that we have had more than 1,600 submissions on this plan. Now, that is a fantastic outcome, Mr Chair, and I know that you've been active in encouraging people to have their say. And it's interesting because the Labour Party and their request here, their question today was about how much money has been wasted, and I say not one cent, yet they would have us waste ratepayers' money by tearing up a proposal and going right back to square one. That would be a waste of money, that would be a waste of money. But we know that Labour doesn't care about wasting money, because they are all about doing reviews, navel-gazing, but not actually making any decisions. I can assure the people in that precinct that we will listen to them, and they will make a clear decision based on consideration of that community feedback in the best interests of our community, in the best interests of Brisbane, and we will make a decision, we will introduce a plan, and that plan will be better for their involvement in it, which is exactly why we do consultation. Yet Labour can sit there talking about an issue they do not understand, an issue that they have suddenly discovered because they see a political opportunity here, yet they've taken no interest in for years and years and years. Let's talk about commitment to the Inogra Creek precinct. At the last election, with the full knowledge that parking was a significant challenge there, but also the need for sporting facilities and playing fields, we made the commitment that we would deliver a purpose-built car park facility to help reduce the amount of parking that spills onto local streets by providing a purpose-built car park with playing fields on top. That was our commitment. Now, what was Labour's commitment? Mr Chair, can you help me out?
They thought it was too much, it was too big.
It's too big, yeah. They were concerned that we were acting to address community concerns.
Point of order to you, councillor Shree.
Sorry to be difficult, and I know the Mayor put a question to you, but I just wanted to clarify, is it appropriate for you to be engaging in political commentary like that while you're chairing the meeting?
I answered a direct question, as I often answer direct questions that you pose to me as well.
But that wasn't a direct question about process.
I accept and respond to many, many questions here every week.
But those are questions about process, Chair, and I'm seeking your ruling. Is it acceptable for you to make substantive comments from the Chair about political issue?
I don't accept the premise of your question. Are there any further questions? Oh, sorry, you actually have, your time has expired, Lord Mayor, yeah. Excuse me. Your time has expired. Are there any further questions?
Yep.
Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, last week the Lord Mayor announced Brisbane's Winter Session Music Festival. Can you please outline how this will support Brisbane's night time economy and our live music industry?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Atwood for the question. So, Mr Chair, it's been over a year since the first coronavirus restrictions came into effect in March 2020. And while many industries have benefited from the easing of those restrictions recently, Brisbane's live music industry continues to be held back by what many people believe is an inconsistent approach to the coronavirus measures. The Shrinna administration has been working with local businesses to help revive Brisbane's music scene and get our night time economy back on track. Since being appointed as Brisbane's first Chair for Nighttime Economy, I have met with many local businesses, artists, producers and workers within our Nighttime Economy precincts that have suffered the worst effects of this pandemic. I asked each and every one of them what support they need and how we can help them recover from the effects of this pandemic. The overwhelming majority of requests was to help support more events like live music and festivals, and to help get people back into venues and to support our local businesses. The Shrinna council has sponsored hundreds of festivals and events to support our night time economy, including a Reimagined Valley Fiesta last November, the biggest one Brisbane ever delivered with more than 90 acts across 14 venues. That brought thousands of people back into the valley and supported hundreds of jobs, not only for our artists but also for the hundreds of mainly casual employees who work in the valley. Last month, I joined the Lord Mayor in launching a two-week campaign to reignite our city's dining scene and deliver an economic boost to our restaurants that have been doing it tough with a decline in after-work patronage during COVID-19. Delivering more than 80 delicious lunch, dinner and bar offerings across 50 city venues, which kick off on the 13th of May, if you haven't already, I do encourage you to jump online and to search the Dine BNE to check out what's on offer. And just last week, I joined Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna to announce Brisbane's newest winter festival. Winter Sounds will provide a much-needed boost to our live music scene and night time economy by supporting more than a dozen venues and hundreds of local jobs with a jam-packed two-week programme of live gigs to help our venues make it through the winter. But despite the Shrinna council's continued investment in economic recovery initiatives, I am told by many venues, businesses and artists that Brisbane's live music industry remains in danger of collapsing if the current restrictions continue. Last week, the Lord Mayor and I heard from iconic bands like Shepherd and Powderfinger, who told us that Brisbane's live music industry is on the brink of extinction. We are standing together with every Brisbane band, artist and venue, calling on the state government to give live music a fair playing field. Clear exemptions have been made for live sporting events, while live music venues still can't break even. Right now, Suncorp Stadium can be filled with more than 50,000 people, but small music venues are enduring capacity limits that can make opening their doors uneconomical. This is impacting heavily, not only on musicians, but also on thousands of mainly casual employees who work in pubs, clubs and entertainment venues. Live music is one of those industries that supports a lot of jobs. The economic research is clear. Every one dollar invested into live music delivers three dollars back into Queensland's economy. Music is just as important a sport, but it continues to struggle due to this unfair double standard that is leaving thousands of people out of work or with significantly reduced hours. Last week, the Lord Mayor wrote to the Premier, the Chief Health Officer and the Minister for Health, asking that they join us in supporting our live music industry by conducting an urgent review of the COVID-19 restrictions that are causing unnecessary harm to Brisbane's live music industry. Live music venues like the Fortitude Music Hall can only hold 1,000 people right now, while it's okay for Suncorp Stadium to be packed to the rafters with 50,000 people. We're calling on the Labour state government to play fair. Brisbane's live music industry is on the brink of extinction. Without urgent changes, iconic venues like the Tivoli, the Trifford and the Zoo are going, may not be around in three to six months' time. Live music venues need to be able to operate at full capacity again. What that means is that a massive band like Shepherd couldn't even break even at their recent album launch. Bands and venues can't put on a show without losing money. We don't want to see our live music industry die. We just want fair rules. I ask that those opposite join us in the more than 18,000 people who have already signed the petition, calling on the Labour state government to support Brisbane's live music industry before it's too late.
Further questions? Councillor Shree.
Thanks Chair, my question's to the Mayor. Lord Mayor, I'm sure you're aware of the protests that local residents organised in Peacock and Hope Street last Wednesday, and that I've identified a zebra crossing on Hope Street as one of my ward's top priorities for funding in the coming council budget. It was a little disappointing to hear the administration suggest it was satisfactory for disabled residents who are travelling south from Hope Street to instead head north and take a seven-minute detour in order to access safe pedestrian crossings. But I'll leave that aside, I'm keen to unpack your views on the broader general concern about insufficient funding for local pedestrian crossings throughout the city. Many residents are concerned that while a lot of money is spent on major intersection upgrades, BCC puts comparatively little funding towards minor pedestrian crossings and local traffic coming, which particularly impacts access for people with a disability. So I'm asking, will you significantly increase the overall budget allocations for pedestrian crossings and minor pedestrian safety improvements throughout the city?
Lord Mayor.
Through you, Mr Chair. Councillor Shree, thank you for the question. The issue here is most certainly not a lack of funding for pedestrian crossings. The issue here is that this is not the recommended response when it comes to specifically an issue that was raised and campaigned upon by a resident with, I understand, a vision impairment, and that was the issue here. What's the appropriate kind of crossing or treatment when it comes to this situation that has been raised? I will never forget, many years ago, as the local councillor for Chandler, being invited by Vision Australia to put on a blindfold and have a cane and try and use a zebra crossing. It was the scariest thing that I've ever done. I did this on Carandale Street, which is behind Carandale Shopping Centre, where there was a aged care facility with a number of residents with vision impairment, and they were trying to cross the road to Carandale Shopping Centre by a zebra crossing. And so Vision Australia came out to, just to illustrate to me why zebra crossings were not ideal in these sort of situations. That has left indelible mark on me that I'll never forget. So I literally had to listen for oncoming traffic and put my trust that if there was any oncoming traffic, that that would stop when they saw me crossing the road. So I was just by myself with a blindfold and a cane, and it was a scary thing. So I do get when the council engineers say that this is not an ideal kind of crossing when it comes to people with a vision impairment. And in fact, zebra crossings have been, I guess, given mixed reviews by different experts.
Point of order to you, councillor Shree.
Just to the substance of the question, which was about seeking a commitment for general increase in funding to pedestrian crossings. I understand that the Mayor might be... The point is we need more funding.
Thank you councillor Shree. The Lord Mayor, you have more than half your time remaining, but please be mindful of the notice.
Absolutely, Mr Chair, and I am aware of the different parts of the question. I was, however, providing some context on this particular issue that was raised. So it is the view of council that a zebra crossing is not the right option or the ideal option in this particular situation, and I do understand why they have made that recommendation. Having said that, councillor Shree has also made a point about funding for pedestrian crossings in general, so I will address that as well. If I recall correctly, we did change the guidelines to allow councillors to invest in these kind of works using their suburban enhancement fund. So, and this was something that I know that a number of councillors, including councillor Shree, have raised in the past, where this funding was previously designed for footpath or park upgrades, and we have broadened it to be allowed to be used on things like pedestrian crossings as well. So we acknowledge that there's a demand for that, and different councillors in different parts of Brisbane will have different priorities, and their communities will have different priorities when it comes to investing those funds. So we have been flexible in allowing the suburban enhancement fund to be invested into things like pedestrian crossings. I'm also quite... I'm also quite, and this is my personal view, flexible when it comes to having a look at different types of pedestrian crossings. And we know there's been talk about things like wombat crossings and how we can incorporate those into Brisbane. I am absolutely open to that. There's a place for those type of crossings, absolutely, and it's about just making sure we narrow down and set the guidelines in place for where they're appropriate to be used and where they may not be, but I'm certainly open to having them added to our suite of crossings.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
Sorry to interrupt you. Councillor Shree. The Mayor hasn't actually answered the question, which was, will you commit to increasing the funding for those local pedestrian crossings across the city?
I thought he had answered that question, but the Lord Mayor, my recollection is that was answered, but Lord Mayor, you've got 20 seconds.
Thank you. We are in the midst at the moment of budget considerations, and this is a matter that we'll be taking into consideration in those budget deliberations. So Councillor Shree will have to wait until the budget is released, but it is something that's been on my mind, Councillor Shree.
Further questions? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, Brisbane residents will soon see more e-scooters on our streets with an increased number due to be approved. Can you please update the chamber on the popularity of e-scooters and the future of e-mobility in our city?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to Councillor Owen for the question. And this is an exciting announcement because in just a few weeks' time, Brisbane will have 500 additional e-scooters on the ground across the CBD and the inner suburbs. Council is keeping a finger on the pulse of active travel trends. We know that in 2021, people want to have more freedom and choice when it comes to how they move around Brisbane. People want fast and convenient ways to get around our suburbs and want to spend less time sitting in their cars in peak hour congestion. That's why Team Shrinna is gearing up to deliver a suite of e-mobility initiatives that will continue shaping Brisbane into a more livable and sustainable city. Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna, as the Public and Active Transport Chair, introduced e-scooters into Brisbane in November 2018, and since that time, more than 4 million rides have been taken by more than 1.4 million riders. E-mobility devices have become the transport mode of choice for many over the last 18 months. E-scooter travel is the only form of transport that has returned to its pre-COVID levels. Prior to the pandemic, Lime and Neuron scooters were being used around 5,500 times a day, and now we're back to this level. While we want people to return to public transport, it's fantastic that the people of Brisbane have shown absolutely no hesitation in hopping back on our e-scooters. That's why I'm pleased to say that very soon, Chair, we'll be deploying even more e-scooters throughout the city to keep up with the high demand. We've seen an evolution in the e-scooter cap, beginning with the introduction of 500 Lime scooters for the e-scooter trial in late 2018. This was increased to 750 Lime scooters in early 2019, before Neuron joined the party in mid-2019. Then in July 2019, council established an e-scooter cap of 1,000 devices shared between both operators. The 1,000 scooter cap is still in place, and the current average number of trips per scooter per day is indicating that we should be making more scooters available. Late last week, we began liaising with our operators regarding an increase to the e-scooter cap from 1,000 to 1,500. We know that they already have additional e-scooters here in Brisbane ready to go, so subject to finalising the increase with them, I'm very excited to say that we can expect to see more e-scooters deployed in our city over the coming weeks. Many of these additional scooters are planned to be deployed around St Lucia and To Wong to support a mobility as a service trial that's due to kick off in the coming weeks. The idea of mobility as a service, which integrates various transport options into one app, was first trialled in Sweden all the way back in 2013. Mobility as a service is now gaining momentum right around the world, including in Australia. Research from last year surveyed almost 4,000 Australians of all ages, and almost half said they would be willing to adopt mobility as a service. The UQ trial will test a smartphone app that provides an integrated multimodal transport platform for students of the university. Students who take part in the study will be able to see all of their travel options in one place: bus, ferry, taxis, ride sharing, campus shuttles and of course, councils' e-scooters. The trial is being led by transport experts at UQ, and I'm sure they'll provide valuable insight into the travel demands and patterns of our students. By providing more scooters, we're also aiming to reduce the number of private vehicle trips that cause congestion and disruption to neighbourhood streets. We know that between 30% to 50% of riders use e-scooters to replace a car ride on their most recent trip. We also know that around half of all private vehicle trips in Brisbane are less than 4.7 kilometres in distance, Chair. What we'd really like to see is e-scooters replacing these shorter car rides, what we call first and last mile trips. Private e-bikes and e-mobility devices more broadly can of course be part of the solution as well. As we know, Chair, sales of e-mobility devices are skyrocketing. Several weeks ago, I stopped by an e-mobility store in New Farm and was shocked to learn that the shop owner told me they're selling 20 to 30 e-scooters every single day, and that's just in one store. And while there are many benefits of e-mobility devices, they also have impacts that need to be managed, and as we know, council's been working on an e-mobility strategy, and we're very proud to be a leader nationally in this space. Other cities have passed up this opportunity, but Brisbane knows that e-mobility fever is already well and truly alive in Australia and will only continue to become more popular as the technology matures. We received over 900 responses from a wide range of residents, stakeholders and industry groups, and look forward to finalising the strategy in the coming weeks. As I've said many times before, Brisbane has well and truly established itself as a leader when it comes to micro mobility and innovative transport options. More e-scooters will be coming in the coming weeks, and the introduction of e-bikes and the construction of new green bridges is just another way that this administration is investing in all forms of mobility across our great city. Team Shrinna is committed to delivering innovative, efficient and reliable active transport for residents and visitors alike, and its initiatives like these will make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. Thanks, Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question's to the Lord Mayor. Residents are calling the Inogra Creek Sports and Recreation Precinct Plan "the most poorly planned project in history", their words. At a community rally I recently attended, I asked residents if they felt like they had a meaningful say in this redevelopment, and not one of them said yes, and you will be able to confirm that, Chair. Residents are being silenced, ignored and berated by this LMP administration for wanting to have a say on local developments and issues. We see it with this plan, and we see it right across the city on an almost daily basis. So my question to the Lord Mayor, is it your directive to treat residents so horribly and call them scaremongers, or is that something your LMP councillors do off their own bat?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. There are only one group of scaremongers in this place, and they sit there, and they're called the Australian Labor Party councillors. They are the only scaremongers, they are the ones that... Well, the Greens do try and scare people on certain things as well, sorry. I stand corrected. But it is not administration councillors that do the scaremongering in this city, unfortunately. This side of the chamber, we're focused on a positive future for Brisbane, for engaging... We're focused on engaging residents, consulting with them and taking them on the journey to build a better Brisbane. Now, we know that when you do any consultation, and this has always been the case with local government, if you're consulting well, you will get a lot of interest, and if it's a big issue like Inogra, you can see that the interest of the community is there, and that is a good thing. Often the challenge we face is to get people interested in consultation that we are doing, and it can be a challenge, it can be a real challenge. We have seen times in the past where we do all types of initiatives to get people interested in a particular matter, yet there is still limited interest. Now, that is something we sometimes cannot control, but in this case, I have to say that it is not the case that people are not involved in the consultation process, and it is certainly not the case that we are not consulting. That is exactly what we have been doing. And there is no fait accompli in this plan. There is nothing that we have said that would indicate that we have already made a decision, and I can confirm that we have not already made a decision on this plan. What we have done is put out proposals to the community and asked them to have their say, and that is what they are doing. And so there is nothing of the sort that Councillor Cassidy is trying to suggest, and in fact, it is just part of his political messaging, Mr Chair, to try and concoct some kind of political theme or narrative. And, you know, the Labor Party is very good at political narratives. They're rotten at government, they're rotten at governance, they are rotten at achieving outcomes, but they are very good at selling a message and repeating it ad nauseam, and that is exactly what we see here. So see it for what it is, Mr Chair. It is Labor Party political messaging, it is party politics above people, that's what they're doing, whereas we're putting the people first by consulting with them and listening to them, and that's what we will continue to do.
Further questions? Councillor Hutton.
My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, Councillor McLaughlin. Councillor McLaughlin, the state government recently advised that $7 million in grant funding has been made available through the South East Queensland Community Stimulus Package. How is this money being spent?
Councillor McLaughlin.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I thank Councillor Hutton for the question. I have talked previously in this place about economic stimulus funding provided to council by the federal government and the state government. All levels of government recognise and support the fast tracking through the provision of additional funds, investment in infrastructure and community activity to foster growth, employment and wider economic benefits. Here in Brisbane, Mr Chair, the City Projects Office, CPO, is doing a sterling job in identifying the grants, monies that are being made available, and then tailoring applications that meet the criteria for the provision of those funds. Mr Chair, just keeping on top of the acronyms created is a tough enough ask. We've got the W4Q, the BAF 2020, the LRCI, Phases One and Two, the URCSP, and now this latest fund, the SEQCSP, the South East Queensland Community Stimulus Programme. This is through the state government, providing $74 million to 12 South East Queensland councils. Brisbane's share in that is $7 million. Mr Chair, this funding will allow the bring forward for delivery of projects across the city, and I'll outline some of those from this $7 million allocation because they're all great projects. The Murray Recreation Reserve will be upgraded with work supporting the cycling community and other users, including works on the Criterion Track upgrade, a new Learn to Ride track, a new Pump BMX track, new lighting and services, water, sewer and power. And this will provide the opportunity to bring the facilities to an international standard through the delivery of a new clubhouse to support the council works, including a two level clubhouse with 360 degree views of the park for all users, including cyclists, spectators and visitors, conference meeting rooms and administration hub for the sporting clubs and storage spaces for the sporting and community groups. Mr Chair, at Everden Park, the Bowls Club driveway and car park access will be upgraded. This will support sport and recreation at the Everden Park Bowls Club and establish a precinct or hub around the Bowls Club, Fallon Park and Everden Park Library. Completing these works will ensure the broader precinct will include the library, Fallon Park and the Bowls Club are now fully integrated and that these community resources are refreshed to meet communities' expectations. And Mr Chair, we're also identifying the need for sports field lighting, and this will allow identification and mitigation of electrical safety issues associated with the condition of sports fields, lighting and associated infrastructure at approximately 180 council owned lease sporting sites. The rectification of any safety issues will be addressed within this programme of works. And I'm pleased to see that we'll be able to help the animal rehoming at Willawong through replacing cat facilities, refurbishment of the dog intake area, improvements to the office building and improvements to the invasive species management team facilities who work from that location. The Albert Street amenity block in the city will see improved public seating, green spaces and storage facilities. And last but not least, the Morning Side SES Depot will see the replacement of its dilapidated roof, proper amenities for volunteers, staff and general building maintenance. Mr Chair, in addition to those committed projects, there is an amount yet to be allocated by the state government, subject to competition against and amongst the councils of South East Queensland. Ours, of course, are the most deserving, but subject now to the state's determination. We've made submissions for funding of the Western Freeway Indrapilly Riverwalk Bike Way, that's $4.7 million, a much needed connection in our bike way network between the Western Freeway Bike Way and the Indrapilly Riverwalk. A Prebble Street to Wishar Bike Way, $3.7 million to provide an active transport connection across Belimba Creek to connect Rochedale to the Belimba Creek Bike Way, with a new bridge crossing Belimba Creek and pathway connections to the existing Belimba Creek Bike Way and Prebble Street. Pinkham Bar access road improvements, $2.5 million, shoulder ceiling and pavement upgrades of high priority sections north of Lamandra Drive, May Myrtle Town Road intersection near the airport. Mr Chair, this round of funding will be announced by the Queensland Government on the 1st of June 2021. Once again, I'd like to say thank you to the Council City Projects Office for the work they're doing to oversee the management of these important state and federal government grants, and for the work of the various programmes to provide the information needed to ensure that we have a pipeline of shovel ready projects ready to submit for consideration. Thank you, Mr Chair.
That concludes question time. Councillors, we now proceed to the establishment court. Point of order to you, Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I move suspension standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion. The Brisbane City Council scraps its current plan to redevelop the Inogra Creek Sports and Recreation Precinct and starts again with proper community consultation.
Second, so I've got a proposal there, moved by Councillor Cassidy, seconded by Councillor Cook, and that's been distributed electronically.
Yes, just now.
Please, three minutes to urgency.
Thanks very much, Chair. It's not okay that residents have to spend thousands of dollars of their own money to make this LMP administration listen to them. More than 3,500 local residents and sporting club members have signed petitions to make this LMP administration and Lord Mayor listen. They've made signs and websites and Facebook pages, held rallies and even put their messages on billboards on the side of the road, but you and I both know, Chair, it should never have come to this. These are residents that have been silenced throughout this entire so-called planning process. As a council, we have an obligation to engage in comprehensive and genuine community consultation, but under this LMP administration, this simply is not happening. If we don't address this issue here and now, this LMP administration will waste tens of thousands of more dollars on this flawed plan. The message from residents and sporting clubs like Softball, and you heard that a couple of weekends ago, Chair, is clear.
Councillor Cassidy, can I just bring it back to urgency, please? Why is the matter urgent? Your comments have been largely substantive, can I just ask you to return to urgency, please?
Well, it should be urgent for you, Chair, particularly because these are your residents, after all. The message from those residents is very loud and very clear. They want this plan scrapped and they want to start again. I can assure you, Chair, that this is an urgent matter for the thousands of residents that this is affecting and that live in the Inogra Ward and are sick and tired of battling an arrogant LMP administration in council here who continue to ignore them and berate them and patronise them. This kind of issue is not isolated, Chair. We see it all across the city each and every day. We see residents in New Farm being called scaremongers. We see people over at Kangaroo Point or Spring Hill who are misled.
I appreciate that, Councillor Cassidy, but why is it urgent? That's the question, why is it urgent?
Well, this is urgent because these residents have been lied to and they've been berated for being scaremongers.
No, that's not true, and also, that's not true, but also, you know that we don't use that sort of language in this place.
These decisions being made by you, Chair, and this LMP Lord Mayor, is to the detriment of these local residents. So it is our responsibility as a council chamber to represent their views because quite simply you won't. You won't as a local councillor, Chair.
I suppose, yes, but why is it urgent? That's the question. I keep asking to come to return to urgency.
Because those hundreds of people that were standing at that rally a few weekends ago, Chair, want this plan to be scrapped, the 3,500 residents who have signed petitions want this plan to be scrapped, all of those dozens of residents that are dipping into their own pockets to campaign to have their voices heard because their local councillor, you, Chair, will not listen to them, and this LMP Lord Mayor will not listen to them. That's why it's urgent today that we deal with this.
Thank you, Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. To the matter of urgency, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by Councillor Cassidy and Councillor Strunk, please ring the bells.
All councillors of the present will proceed to the vote. All those, excuse me, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand. And all those against, please say no and raise your hand. Clarks, please read the result when you're ready.
The chair notes have it.
Mr Chair, noes have it, the voting being five in favour and 17 against.
The noes have it. We will now proceed to the Establishment and Coordination Committee, please. The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the Autumn Recession 2021 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the Autumn Recession 2021 on matters usually considered by that committee be adopted. Lord Mayor, is there any debate?
Yes, Mr Chair. First, I'd like to ask that Item B be taken, seri Adam, for debate and voting.
Item B taken, seri Adam, for debate and vote.
And that we deal with the other matters first.
Okay.
Is that all right?
That's fine, please proceed.
Okay, excellent. Before we move on, I just wanted to raise some of the matters that have come up in council today. It was really quite extraordinary to see the way that Labour's attitude changed on this issue of parental flexibility and parental leave. On the one hand, they're coming forward with something which I believe was motivated by positive intentions, but when the shortcomings of their proposal were pointed out, just watch them turn. Watch them get nasty. Watch them vote against their own proposal. It was really quite extraordinary, and you can quite clearly see that the leader of the opposition is not really the leader of the Labour team. You can see that he doesn't set the agenda, he takes the orders from someone else, and they obviously don't communicate with each other either. So, it's, you know, quite mind-boggling to see the way that these councillors operate. We have a situation with unlimited flexibility. Unlimited flexibility. And really, what it came down to is the one thing that they could really criticise was that you have to stand up at the beginning of a meeting and put in an apology. Now, I've said we can be flexible on that, we can look at a different way to do that, yet out of pig-headedness, they have decided to then vote against their own proposal. So, look, I do not know, I do not know where these guys are coming from, Mr Chair, but it's quite clear they do not know what they're doing. It's quite clear that the team that we have of Labour councillors have no idea about running Australia's largest council. It's what we said at the last election, and it is increasingly being proven to be the truth. They can't even coordinate themselves, they can't even coordinate to make a convincing argument on a particular matter, and then they put something forward and then end up voting against it. So, it's really very disappointing but not surprising, Mr Chair. When it comes to the Inogra Creek Precinct, I just wanted to finish off my comments that I was making in question time. We are committed to investing in that precinct, we are committed to listening to residents, and we are committed to rejecting Labour's intent to turn this into some kind of party political issue. That is not the best outcome for residents. And on the one hand, Labour councillors were asking, well, how much money has been wasted? Yet, they want to scrap an entire process, a process where people have invested significant time in writing submissions and submitting their feedback, and Labour wants all of that feedback scrapped and ignored, and let's go back to square one. Wasting time and money in the process, because that's what would happen if we did what Labour wanted. Wasting time and money, scrapping the genuine feedback that has come from residents and ignoring that, well, we won't be doing that. We'll be listening to people. They have put in their submissions in record numbers, we've had 1,600-plus submissions, and we will be reading through every submission and considering and listening. And we will be working to get the best outcome for the community, and I know that you support that intent, Mr Chair. So, I'm confident that we will get a good, positive outcome in the Inogra Creek Precinct. I commend you, Mr Chair, on having the courage to go forward with a complex issue. There are some people in this business that shy away from complex issues because they are scared. They are scared to tackle difficult issues. They know that when you put out a plan like this, there'll be people who are upset, there'll be people with strong opinions one way or the other, and if you didn't have that courage, you'd prefer that debate not to come on. But, Mr Chair, you have, and I know councillor Vicky Howard has as well, and other local councillors around that area, have had the courage to go ahead and say, well, this is our proposal, you can have your say, you don't have to agree with us, but it's just a proposal, have your say and we will listen to you. And I also have to say, you know, you showed great courage and fortitude in your approach to residents, and it was a credit to you, Mr Chair, because it is never easy to get shouted at, it is never easy to get berated, and it is never easy when you've got cynical, party-politically motivated Labour councillors trying to fan the flames. And one thing they do do well is to try and stir up a bit of hysteria, and so they were actively doing that. But you stood your ground, Mr Chair, you were reasonable, and I commend you for it. And I think we'll get a good outcome for the whole community as a result of this process, as we look through the 1,600-plus submissions. Moving on to some other matters, I usually talk at the beginning of my NC report on the lighting up of council assets and the different charity events and particular relevant campaigns that are running at a particular time. Our May is Lung Health Awareness Month, and the Lung Foundation of Australia is the only charity in Australia providing support and a voice to people living with a lung disease. In support, the Tropical Dome, Radcliffe Place Sculptures, Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will tonight be lit in green in support of Lung Health Awareness Month. This month also marks the Candlelight Vigil for Domestic Violence Prevention Month, and so I know at various locations there are candlelight vigils being held, and there'll be one, I understand, tomorrow evening at Kangaroo Point, and there are others happening at different locations during the month, just to say no to domestic violence. And to show our support, we'll be lighting up the Tropical Dome, Radcliffe Place Sculptures, Story Bridge and Victoria Bridges in purple tomorrow on Wednesday. It was also mentioned before, Mr Chair, that in partnership with the LGAQ, we are reaffirming our commitment to saying no to domestic violence as part of their Not in Our Backyard campaign, and it's great to see councillors signing up to that pledge in front of us here. Look forward to getting every councillor's signature on that and then doing our part to be part of this important community campaign. The, in terms of that particular campaign, I understand some councillors not here in person, so we'll make sure that they can have the ability to sign that in person at the appropriate time. In relation to other matters, I'd mention the progress that is happening when it comes to the Olympics, and we're seeing all three levels of government working very closely on that, together with the AOC, and we are ever hopeful that a decision will be made by the AOC in July, and we'll find out whether we become the host city and host region or not at that stage. And so everything is still looking positive in terms of that expectation. If anything changes, I'll be sure to update you, but it is all heading in the right direction, everyone's working well together, and the planets continue to look aligned. So, it is just, I have to say, fantastic to see everyone working together very cooperatively on that. We have had our differences with people like Minister Hinchcliffe in the past on various matters, but I can tell you, the Olympics is not one of them. We've been working very closely and it's been a good thing to see. And the same thing goes with all three levels of government. In terms of the official items in front of us, Item A is the Audit Committee Report, and this relates to the meeting held on 11th of March. Item C, as you know, we've skipped Item B at this point in time, Mr Chair. Item C relates to dealing with some historical issues about the Eastern Busway. Now, essentially, the Department of, the State Department of Transport and Main Roads has indicated that they finally have some funding to resolve some of these outstanding issues, and they are progressing with us to get those resolved. These are obviously matters that have been floating around for quite some period of time, but we're pleased to see that we're working cooperatively together to resolve those issues. Item D relates to Roachdale Road and Priestale Road intersection upgrade property resumptions. This is one that I'm very excited to see moving forward. It is a particularly busy intersection with multiple large schools nearby, with traffic not only from both.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, seconded.
An extension of time has been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it, Lord Mayor, 10 minutes.
With traffic not only from Brisbane City Council area but from Logan City Council area and, to a certain extent, Redland City Council, and so it's currently a very small roundabout, single-lane roundabout, and it is well and truly over capacity. And thanks to support from the federal government and also the local federal member, Ross Vasta, we're able to move forward now with federal funding to assist us in upgrading this road, and also support from Logan City Council. So this intersection is funded in a three-way partnership between the federal government, Brisbane City Council and Logan City Council. So, it's been a long time coming, but now glad to see it coming underway or getting underway, and these property resumptions are essential in making that intersection upgrade a priority. It's been sad to see the Labour state members in the area criticizing the different levels of government involved in this project, yet we're yet to see one single dollar allocated from the state government towards this intersection, despite the fact that school traffic is a significant contributor to traffic at this intersection. But regardless, we'll get on with it, we'll make it happen, and these resumptions need to happen for the intersection upgrade to occur. Item E is also related to an historic matter with the In-N-Out and Busway, and this is once again a case of TMR, having some funding to resolve some outstanding issues. And what we see here is a land exchange between council and the state government that will see a net gain of 7,208 square metres to council, which will go towards the Victoria Park area. So that's a positive outcome, and one that we're glad to see finally resolved. Item F is the Stores Board submission for a significant contracting plan for traffic signal works. We have a large network of traffic signals across the city, approximately 950 signalised intersections right across Brisbane, and the work that is required to be done on these obviously requires a contracting plan, and that's what we're progressing with. Item G is the Contracts and Tendering Report for February 2021. I know there's a number of projects here which other councillors will be speaking on, but we also see some significant progress being made on projects like Brisbane Metro and the Metro Depot in particular, but also a range of suburban upgrades that we are doing right across Brisbane, building better suburbs, building stronger suburbs, investing in the suburbs and creating jobs while supporting local businesses through our procurement policy. Already this financial year, more than $600 million worth of contracts have gone to local businesses. That's a significant injection in our local economy. So that's good, that's a good thing, that supports local jobs, and it also supports the security of work for many Brisbane residents. They know that there's council work coming their way, and that is something that helps put food on a lot of tables. Those businesses get the opportunity to gear up, and if they provide services to Brisbane City Council, they can take that to the bank and literally go to any other council in Australia and say, we've done work for Australia's largest council, we've done work for the biggest council in Australia, and that is like the best letter of reference you can have with other councils. So, once they do work with Brisbane City Council, they can get work elsewhere a lot easier, and once again, that is one of the ways that we're supporting local business. In relation to Item B.
Lord Mayor, what we'll do is we'll do that completely separately. So we'll deal with A, then not B, then C through G right now.
Okay.
Then we'll return, I'll call you again for Item B afterwards.
Thank you.
Is there further debate? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, Chair. Could I just ask that A be taken by itself, seri Adam?
Seri Adam, just for voting?
For voting, and then F and G together.
So that will mean?
Just three lots then?
That A and then F and G together will be taken seri Adam for voting.
Yep, and then C, D, E together, yep.
Yeah, that's right, that's the balance. Please proceed.
So, on Item A, the Audit Committee Report, again, has such little detail, it doesn't paint a picture as to what's really going on with this administration, there's a lack of transparency, and the only opportunity we have to review this is what the administration deems appropriate for us to see, and then they ask us to rubber stamp it as councillors, and they ask us to just trust them to do the right thing with any oversight of this chamber. So we won't be supporting this item once again when we see this administration mislead local residents, let alone councillors in this place just about every day of the week. So like an increasing number of residents around Brisbane, Chair, we are once bitten twice shy when it comes to this administration. Clause C and Clause E, as the Lord Mayor said, are these land tenure impacts for the busways, South East Busway, sorry, Eastern Busway and In-N-Out and Busway, clearing up those land tenure arrangements, we'll be supporting those items. Clause D, the Roachdale Road, we see these property resumptions not going entirely smoothly as they sometimes don't, but with the track record we've seen, even just in recent months, by this administration in terms of community consultation, we hope these residents and their objections are actually being listened to and taken seriously into consideration. We know all too well that this LNP Lord Mayor and LNP councillors in this place, and we know all too well how they treat residents when they speak out on an issue, Chair, so often ignoring and often patronising them as well. So we hope that this is not occurring here to these property owners as they are negotiating an outcome. Clause F, the Stores Board submission on the contracting plan. We have the submission for a significant contracting plan for traffic signal work, something pretty basic the council does. It says in the contracting plan that this work is purely for emergency works, and Labour certainly hopes that is the case, and it's not another move by this LNP administration towards the casualisation of council's workforce. I, you know, question if there's something more this LNP-run council can be doing for emergency traffic signals instead of just relying on contractors to come in, and the procurement documents before us today confirm that this is work the council could do. They confirm, quite often we see the words, no, council can't do this work, but in this case, it's actually explicit that council could be doing this work, but again, political decisions being made by the LNP administration to contract out this work and continue to contract out this work. The item also has highlighted significant risks, that the quality of products and services will not be up to standard, up to council standard, that wouldn't be the case if this was done in-house and an investment was made in a team that could do this work. And that's quite concerning considering traffic signals are in place to protect drivers and the community and save lives, particularly in emergency situations. So again, Chair, this is quite clearly a political decision to contract out this ongoing work, basic ongoing work. So we won't be supporting this item. Clause G, Contracts and Tendering for February 2021, again, an enormous list of contracts that we are expected to simply rubber stamp but have no real debate or say in, and there is never anything on file for what decisions have been made in terms of awarding these contracts. There's $100 million worth of contracts being handed out by council's delegate here, and that's $100 million of public money, of ratepayers' money, that their elected representatives are not having a vote or a say on, Chair. I'm sure many residents would love to have an opinion through their elected representative on how this money is being spent, especially when we see the $2.5 million being spent on management services to deliver the Metro Depot. on management services to deliver the Metro Depot. This LMP Lord Mayor is now even outsourcing the management of the delivery of the Metro Depot, which includes an awful lot of contract work as well. So the Lord Mayor, Chair, has hollowed out council's expertise so much that it can't even manage projects anymore. Can't even manage what this Lord Mayor would describe as council's most significant project this term. Either that, Chair, or he doesn't trust himself to get the job done because we know his track record on project management, like Kingston Smith Drive, a year delayed, a year delayed, and tens of millions of dollars over budget. Tens of millions of dollars. And a company even went broke, Chair. A company even went broke on his watch trying to mop up his mess, Chair. So perhaps it is a good thing while this Lord Mayor sits in that chair that other people manage his projects. The shovels haven't even hit the ground for the metro, and already we know by the Lord Mayor's own admission, there's been a $300 million cost blowout on this project. I was talking to an elderly lady from Baldwin Living in Tagam at a mobile office just the other day, Chair, and she raised the issue of the Brisbane Metro with me. She brought it up, and she said, "Why is the Lord Mayor spending so much money on this project when residents at Baldwin Living can't even get to a bus stop? Most of them are in their 80s and 90s, the footpaths are so cracked and dangerous around there, and the bus stop out the front is not in use, and they're forced to walk down the road just to get to the shops or to the city themselves." And I'm sure she knew, and she will soon, don't worry, Chair, that to date some $1.7 million has been spent advertising, as we find out today in the agenda, advertising the Brisbane Metro, a project that hasn't even started when we can't even get safe footpaths to get elderly residents to bus stops in the suburbs. Chair, so you get a real sense of this Lord Mayor's priorities in these contracts and how wrong they all are.
Further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on several of these items, on item C, D, E, F and G. In relation to item C and E, as the Lord Mayor said, these are historical issues relating to land tenure issues between the council and the state government, in particular. The eastern busway, item C, relates to a project deed that was dated October 2009, where we agreed to work cooperatively with TMR for the delivery of the Beranda to Main Avenue Cooperuse stage, and that was opened in August 2011. But there are issues relating to where their busway goes and council land, so this is effectively a land swap by agreement between the council and the state in this regard. Adopting the recommendation will ensure that the land tenure actions will be finalized, and that's to excise eastern busway infrastructure from council land and provide, as well, secondly, legal rights of access and maintenance on that part of the Lauris Street drain that's situated on TMR land. So don't believe there's any controversy in these issues. There's no cost to council from this change, and there's clearly mutual benefit to both parties. In relation to item D, land resumptions, indeed, as the Lord Mayor said, this is an excellent project delivering great outcomes to help us build a better Brisbane, a safer Brisbane for all our residents and indeed residents to the south of the Brisbane council area, and provides a significant change to what's a congested road infrastructure. So the consequence of doing this work will remove the roundabout, which isn't working, install traffic signals. It'll create four through lanes on Rochdale Road, and it will install double right turn lanes for westbound traffic on Priestdale Road. It'll construct off-road paths, bicycle lanes, prioritized pedestrian crossings on approaches to the intersection, construct left turn lanes on approaches to the intersection, and install a U-turn facility at the northern section of the intersection. So all up a really good project, and I thank the federal government for its support for this particular project. This is jointly funded by the council and the Australian Government through the Urban Congestion Fund, and with support also from the Logan City Council as part of a major roads upgrade program. So this is part of what has been a $500 million commitment to deliver congestion busting projects and safety improvements across Brisbane. So we are committed to building a better, safer Brisbane and our road network, and also providing the infrastructure required for all other users as well, cyclists and pedestrians. In relation to item E, as I said, this was a past land issue that needed to be resolved. This was a consequence of an MOU that dated back to 2001, when council agreed to contribute to and support the TMR in the delivery of the inner northern busway project. And as the Lord Mayor said, the land exchange here will result in a gain of some 7,200 square metres of land, which will assist us in the delivery of a fantastic Victoria Park project, which is coming through, coming our way. But this is an element of cleanup of a land use issue between TMR and council, and again, I don't think constitutes any great controversy. I did hear in relation to items F and G, councillor Cassidy, the leader of the opposition, revert to his usual outsourcing mantra, anything that's not done by council employees is bad. Well, look, in relation to item F, he said, "Why are we doing it?" He assumed or asserted, in fact, that there's a political interference in the procurement here, which is completely untenable. What this is, is making sure that we meet, council meets, its KPIs when a set of traffic lights are impacted in an accident. So what councillor Cassidy's solution is, is to leave an impacted set of traffic signals un repaired while waiting for a council crew to become available, instead of going to a procurement panel that we have in place to go and fix that problem before it becomes a problem for motorists and other users on the road network. That would be the outcome of his approach to procurement, is to not have any contracting panel in place to deal with the overflow work that's required or to deal with an incident as it occurs, and instead only rely on council employees. Well, they all do fantastic work. I'm going to assume all the members of the Electrical Trades Union. So to that extent, councillor Cassidy, you want to cut off your nose to spite your face and deny work to members of the ETU in this regard, and that seems to me to be a foolish outcome. But indeed, it would be more foolish for us not to address the issue of repair of traffic signals when they're impacted in an accident, which is the usual situation that arises, and we can provide our work for contractors. We've had a contract in place to do exactly this for several years. That procurement arrangement expires in August this year. The existing panel consists of three contractors all with local offices. The procurement officers advise that there are more contractors who are capable of doing this work. So this will provide further opportunity for local contractors to get involved in providing important, safe work for council, for our road network. In relation to item G, there were a couple that I wanted to mention, all again with the support of the federal government. So contracts to help us build a better Brisbane, and again, thank the federal government for its support. Contract number two mentioned here in item G, the Gresham Street Bridge replacement program, which I've mentioned here previously in the council. This is part of the government's bridge renewal program, contribution of $700,000, and again, work that has been brought forward as a consequence of that support. We have important work at the Coronation Drive retaining wall. This is to fix approximately 100, or in an area approximately 190 metres downstream from the Chasely Street Coronation Drive intersection, requires rectification to ensure it remains safe for road and bicentennial bikeway users. Again, this work is being undertaken with a million dollars grant from the Australian Government through the LRCI, the Local Roads and Community Infrastructure Program, which I mentioned previously in question time, and again, ensuring that our infrastructure is up to the standards that our residents expect. We have at contract number five, the Norris Road and Barber Road intersection upgrade improvements. Again, a really significant project on the north side of the city to upgrade existing roundabout and intersection to provide a signalized intersection. Again, really important work for us, and again, jointly funded with the federal government through its Urban Congestion Fund. And the last contract that I wanted to mention here in item G was the Chelsea Road and Rickett Road intersection upgrade, which again is a wonderful project that has been a long time coming with lots of planning in the past, and now we can get on and do it, let those contracts with the support of the federal government, again, through its Urban Congestion Fund. All great projects, Mr. Chair, all helping us to build a better Brisbane, and all helping to make our roads and our infrastructure generally safer for everybody in Brisbane.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Landers.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton. This council now adjourn for a period of 15 minutes for the purpose of afternoon tea, commencing with when all councillors have vacated the chamber. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when you all leave. Thank you.
Oh. Councillor Murphy.
Got a speaker, hey? Yeah, thanks very much, Chair Rice, to speak on item G, contracts and tendering. Just firstly to contract one, the Metro Depot Delivery Management Services, and number 10, the design and construct contract for the Metro Depot. Now, as councillors will be aware, Brisbane Metro, the Brisbane Metro Depot will stable the initial fleet of metro vehicles along with the necessary staff and key maintenance equipment to ensure that the fleet is operational. The depot will include an administration building, operator facilities, a stabling yard for the initial fleet, and the ability to expand in future years, garage maintenance capability and slow and fast charging facilities for the zero tailpipe emission battery electric vehicle fleet. I'll just start with contract 10. Now, we've been in this chamber talking about this Australia First green star rated Metro Depot for a long time. I appreciate that. In the last session, we announced the winner of the contract as Adco Constructions. I know that I've said this, that LM has said it, but it's worth saying again, Adco is an Australian-owned construction company. It was established in 1972. It's successfully delivered over 3,500 projects across Australia, valued at over $14 billion. They have a national workforce of 500 employees with offices located in Brisbane and the Gold Coast, nearly 50 years of experience in the design and construction of industrial facilities of a similar scope, size and scale of the Brisbane Metro Depot. They have successfully delivered previous facilities for Brisbane City Council, including the Trade Coast Bus Depot at Eagle Farm, the Southern Regional Business Centre at Yorongpili, and the redevelopment of the Chinatown Mall in Fortitude Valley. Adco Constructions has an established office in Brisbane and will staff the project with Brisbane-based resources, Chair. They have estimated that 97.5% of the contract spend will occur in Brisbane and southeast Queensland. As part of the tenant process, officers have advised that Adco provided strong measurable benefits to the local community for the ward of this contract, with an example being construction careers based learning opportunities provided to the nearby Rochdale State High School, and I think councillor Huang will be very pleased with that. And to contract one, Metro Depot Delivery Management Services, Chair, as I've said in the past in this place, infrastructure and public transport are not as easy as one would think to deliver projects of that scope. The outside world, it just happens, but we need to make sure that it can just happen within council and happen smoothly. This requires specialist services, and the reason that we have awarded the Metro Depot Delivery Management Services to SMEC Australia is to make sure that we have the best possible depot built to the highest possible standards. Council required an experienced superintendent and a supporting team for the multi-disciplinary design review, contract administration, coordination, onsite inspection and assurance of the construction activities for the design and construction of the Brisbane Metro Depot to ensure the requirements of the design and construction deed, including our very specific and very exacting performance requirements were met and carried out by the contractor. Now, why can't this be done in-house? Council has loads of, you know, project management staff. Well, actually Cross River Rail, Chair, has taught us a lot, a lot about this. One could argue it's an example of what not to do. Let's go back in time. Remember, Kaye Jones was the minister managing Cross River Rail right before she was accused by the CFMEU of selling out Queenslanders' jobs. The $5.4 billion, 10.2 kilometre Cross River Rail project had a 10-person board to ensure that Cross River Rail stayed on track. And when this aforementioned board warned that the project was headed for a multi-billion dollar blower and it wouldn't meet its performance requirements, what happened? Minister Jones sacked the board, of course. The 10-person board was replaced by a compliance unit, made up of public servants to ensure that all commitments made were met during the construction of the project, and the compliance unit would be headed by Minister Jones herself. And while this project's ministers, two of three are now no longer ministers and even members of parliament, may have had the right intentions, and I'm not here to judge their intentions, here to judge their performance, that has been a very bad way of managing that project. And council will not do that. Council will take a different route. We are happy on this side of the chamber to admit that when something is outside of our skill set and management of construction of a state-of-the-art, never-before-built electric charging depot, a project worth $6.4 million, the first of its kind in the country, is something that is outside our skill set, and we are happy to be working with SMEC Australia to make sure that we have the absolute best project management and assurance skills for the Brisbane Metro Depot.
Further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Just a really quick one in the contracts and tendering report. I'm seeing more and more expense items come through for retaining wall reconstruction, and I just wanted to draw this to the attention of the councillors who might see themselves as still being in this chamber in five or 10 years and recognize that unless we start seriously talking about mitigation and responses to climate change and sea level rise, these costs are going to rise significantly. Every few years, there's another few million dollars spent on retaining wall repairs, and right now, we're not really talking much about those costs. They sort of slip off the radar a bit, but if you look at the long-term trends, the amount of money that Brisbane City Council is having to spend on retaining wall construction is actually increasing quite significantly year on year. So I just wanted to highlight that as perhaps one of the unacknowledged negative impacts of global warming and climate change, and suggest that Brisbane City Council might have to take a slightly different approach to how we rehabilitate and repair some of these retaining walls and creek banks and river banks long term. And perhaps this is something for the Lord Mayor to look at more closely, but it's a shame councillor Cunningham's not here in the chamber today because the work in Hanlon Park is a really good example of a different way to manage waterways, rather than building hard structures that can deteriorate and erode over time. Working with the natural systems of a waterway and creating flexible boundaries where creeks and rivers can flow and shift a little bit is a really good approach, and actually works out cheaper in the long term than spending lots and lots of money building a hard retaining wall that we then have to replace for a few million dollars 10 or 20 or 30 years down the line. So as a river city, I think we need to pay a bit more attention to this issue. We have a very extensive riverfront throughout Brisbane, and when we approve developments that are right up onto the river and that have those big intense retaining walls onto the waterway, I don't think we're thinking long term enough about actually how much is it going to cost to maintain that infrastructure 50, 60 years from now? We're creating a problem for future city councillors and future generations where we know there's going to be more and more erosion along our waterways, and we know that the costs of maintaining retaining walls and associated infrastructure are going to continue to rise. So we need to start shifting the way we design our waterways to have more of those permeable riparian areas where instead of hard concrete, you plant up creek bed vegetation, riverside vegetation to hold the banks and stabilize them against erosion, rather than relying on hard surfaces that eventually deteriorate. So just maybe for councillors who have creeks and parts of the river run through their ward, which is probably most councillors- on hard surfaces that eventually deteriorate. So just maybe for councillors who have creeks and river, parts of the river run through their ward, which is probably most councillors, just do have a look at how much money we tend to be spending on retaining walls and also on culverts and bridge reconstructions, et cetera, and recognise that right now, we're not keeping up with existing maintenance demands. There will be retaining walls in most councillors' wards that are overdue for maintenance and repair and that are slowly falling apart and which the council hasn't yet allocated the money to improve or remediate. And so if we're already falling behind now in terms of maintaining some of those retaining walls and creek banks and river banks, think about what it's going to be like in 50 or 60 years when we have more severe weather events and sea levels have risen significantly. Thanks.
Further speakers? No further speakers, Lord Mayor? All right, just bear with me, please, councillors. On item A, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. Councillors, all councillors are present, we will now vote on item A, all those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands. And those against, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 5 against.
The ayes have it on items C, D and E, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. There is no division. On items F and G, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy.
Division.
And councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. All councillors are present, we will proceed to the vote. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And all those against, please say no and raise your hand. And abstentions, please raise your hand. Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour, 1 against and 4 abstentions.
The ayes have it, the ayes have it on all items except for item B, which we will now proceed to further debate, the Lord Mayor, item B of the ENC report.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you.
I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I am aware that this clause involves YFG Shopping Centres. I'm aware that YFG Shopping Centres have made political donations to both sides of politics in the past. As you know, I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres, PTY LTD, made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Adams.
Mr Chair, I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres, PTY LTD, made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Landers.
I declare a declarable interest, a conflict of interest in clause B. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres, PTY LTD, made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Hutton.
I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres, PTY LTD, made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Mackay.
I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres Proprietary Limited made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Adaman.
I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres, PTY LTD, made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Hammond.
I declare, I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres, PTY LTD, made donation to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Atwood.
I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centre, PTY LTD, made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Huang.
Yep, I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centre, Proprietary Limited, made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Point of order, councillor McGlocklin.
I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres Proprietary Limited made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team, $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Davis.
I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres Proprietary Limited made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Murphy.
I declare a conflict of interest in clause B. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres Proprietary Limited made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Allen.
I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I am a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres, PTY Limited, made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Howard.
I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres Proprietary Limited made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Terme.
I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I'm also a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres Proprietary Limited made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May 2017.
I too declare, I declare a declarable conflict of interest in clause B and I'm a member of the Liberal National Party of Queensland. YFG Shopping Centres, PTY LTD, made donations to the Liberal National Party of Queensland council team of $10,000 in June 2016 and $10,000 in May of 2017. Are there any more conflicts of interests?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I don't have a declarable conflict of interest or a prescribed conflict of interest under the legislation and I don't believe that any of the LNP councillors in this place do because the legal advice I received from the city legal office here was that donations made to a political party, and in this case, the LNP, over the relevant term goes back to 2016. Well, there are the donations listed that need to be declared if LNP councillors are going to declare them because it's not just for the council team. The legislation is very clear that it is also for state election purposes as well under the legislation. And the total, the $500 total is divided amongst all candidates, not just sitting councillors that contested the last four elections. So the Labor Party received $1,000 in that relevant term, which is not, which is neither a prescribed nor declarable conflict of interest and I don't believe any LNP councillor does either.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer that.
Look, I don't really want, we don't really have a resolution to debate, but I was of the strong understanding that there was a declarable conflict of interest that had to be declared in that manner. And therefore the conflict of interest rules apply. My preference as always is to better be safe than sorry on these things and I would rather do it this way and be over cautious than the alternative. Is there, Deputy Mayor, you have a resolution?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that this chamber resolve that as a majority of councillors present have declared conflict of interest in this matter, deciding this matter be delegated to the chief executive officer in accordance with section 238 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010.
Second.
It's been moved by, it's been moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Landers, that this matter be referred to the chief executive officer in line with section 238 of the City of Brisbane Act. I have had a number of discussions with council officers about whether this is, whether debate is required because there are choices about which avenue the councillors can choose, there can be debate on this matter. Councillor Adams, do you wish to debate this matter at all? Is there any debate on that resolution? Councillor Cassidy.
Yes, Chair, if we follow the logic now of LNP councillors here, that it is only the $20,000 that is declarable over the relevant term, which is from 2016 through to now, which is two election periods where there were 27 LNP candidates at each, that's $370 a head, even if we're going to go down that route. So there is no declarable conflict of interest in this matter. So I don't think, I don't believe that this, this item does need to be referred to the CEO for a decision at all. And I get that this, the intent of the legislation is that councillors can make those choices, but I just want to put that on record that in previous instances, there definitely has been on both sides of the chamber here, but I really, on the advice that I've received previously from the city legal office, and if we're, if we're saying there was, there was two $10,000 donations, which is to be spread across all of the candidates, and from memory, the LNP ran 27 candidates, Lord Merrill candidate in 26 wards over the last two elections, that this, this matter should be debated by this chamber and a decision should be made where the elected representatives of the people of Brisbane, the CEO is not.
Further debate? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair, I just think it's disappointing that once again, political parties' decision to accept corporate donations has interfered with the... Sorry, I didn't hear the interjections, you'll get your turn to speak shortly, I'm sure. But what seems to have happened here is that a particular supermarket operator has donated $20,000 to the Liberal National Party and there's now a motion before the council as to whether we continue to lease premises from that donor. That's my understanding, it does seem...
Actually, councillor Shree, the issue, this is always the issue, and one of the things that we discussed at length before the debate is that the debate about whether it should be referred or not becomes a surrogate debate about the issue and therefore we strove, we do drift into conflict matters.
I can see, yeah, it is a problem, yeah.
Can I just ask you to be mindful of that?
I am mindful of that and I think it does highlight a real problem when elected representatives take money from big business that then compromises their ability to do their job and makes it impossible to hold public decision makers democratically accountable. In this case, what we're doing is saying, well, most of the councillors in this chamber have a conflict of interest, therefore we're going to delegate the decision to the unelected CEO. And I can see that the councillors here feel like they have no choice because they're all compromised, but it would have been a lot better if the Liberal National Party and perhaps the Labor Party just don't take donations from businesses of this nature. And it would be nice to hear some commitment from the LNP that in future, they won't take donations from businesses that they are currently engaged in contractual dealings with. Like the council is making decisions about whether or not to renew leases and extend contracts and do business with companies that are essentially paying money back into the LNP. That's, that's legal bribery and I know some people were...
No, no.
You reject, you reject the term bribery, but it's legal, I'm not saying it's illegal, I'm just saying it's very problematic. I don't, I mean, you might not like that definition of the word bribery, but that's kind of what's going on here, is that companies are making donations to political parties because they believe it is in their best interest for those political parties to get re-elected. And they're doing that because they know that they're going to get something in return down the line. And in this case, we're...
I don't think that assertion's fair. Look, and can I, like I say, the resolution in front of us is whether this matter should be go to the CEO or one of the alternatives in 238 should be there.
And what I'm saying, Chair, is that we shouldn't have to delegate these matters to the CEO because councillors shouldn't be taking donations from businesses in the first place. The LNP team didn't need to take that $20,000 donation from the supermarket company.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Murphy. You have been very lenient with councillor Shree and I appreciate the point he's trying to make, but we're now in substantive debate territory about an issue that is not related to what is right in front of us now. I agree. And councillor Shree, can I just ask you to return to the substance of the matter, which is whether this item should be referred to the CEO or not?
Look, I'll keep it very short and quite simply, political parties should not be accepting donations from companies like this. It's quite simple and it's disappointing, it's disappointing that we have to continue to delegate decisions like this to unelected public servants because it undermines the ability of councillors in this place to do their democratic duty and to serve the interests of the general public. And I don't think that's an uncontroversial position, I think in fact, the majority of residents of this city would prefer if political parties... Sorry councillor Mackay, you're saying it's acceptable to take donations from big businesses? I missed that interjection, you can get up and speak if you want, but I, I just think it would be a lot simpler if political parties stop taking donations from big business. And I think the majority of residents agree with that position and I think if councillors are feeling defensive or uncomfortable about that suggestion, maybe that's cause for self-reflection and a good prompt to re-examine your own party's processes. We've been having these debates within the Greens for a number of years now and we've moved away from accepting these big corporate donations because it undermines, because it undermines faith in the democratic process. And I think if councillors are feeling defensive about it, as I said, maybe that's a sign that the LNP's party processes also need to change and maybe the LNP should stop accepting donations from businesses. It's pretty simple.
All right.
Chair, you've tolerated multiple...
I've asked them to be quiet.
And are you taking any action against them? No, okay, that's cool.
Well, the same amount I take against you when you interject as well.
I don't think I interject very often compared to that, but that's fine. Look, I'll leave it at that, I just think LNP councillors should stop taking donations from businesses, same goes for the other political parties.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams got to write a reply at the end, so does anyone else have anything to contribute? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to make some clarity around hypocrisy having turned green from the party that took the largest corporate donation in the history of Australian government, but apparently they moved away from that or moved away from us being able to clearly see that when it comes from the head office. Just to councillor Cassidy's point, 20,000 divided by 27 is $740, that is a declarable conflict of interest.
All right, I will now put the resolution that this matter be referred to the CEO, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk, please ring the bells. Councillors, we'll now proceed to the vote. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, and those against, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
Clerks, please read the result when you're ready.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 16 in favour and five against.
The ayes have it. That concludes the ENC report. Councillors, the second ENC report, the Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of the council during the Autumn Recession 2021 on matters usually considered by that committee be noted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the report of the setting out of the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of the council during Autumn Recession 2021 on matters usually considered by that committee be noted. Is there any debate? The Lord Mayor.
Yes, Mr Chair, just briefly. This submission is for the resumption of easements for drainage purposes along four properties in Kent Street, four properties in Dover Street, and three properties in Mornington Street, Red Hill. Much of the existing stormwater system in the vicinity of Mornington Street, Red Hill, was constructed a very long time ago, in fact, prior to 1930, and the structures are now ending, or nearing the end of their useful life. Mornington Street, Red Hill, has a drainage design project which involves constructing new major drainage infrastructure to upgrade the existing drainage capacity, including the installation of intermediate access shafts, microtunneling, field inlets in the overland flow path, and the installation of gullies at Thornsby Street, Mornington Street, Dover Street, and Kent Street, Red Hill. Not all the works can be undertaken within the existing road corridors or on council land, and to facilitate the project, it's necessary to require or to acquire volumetric easements for drainage purposes through private properties. Notices of intention to resume easements for drainage purposes were issued to the owners of the subject properties. Objections from some of the owners of these subject properties were received, and these have been worked through with council officers. Negotiations for compensation will continue concurrently with the formal resumption process. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks, Chair. These drainage works are required, obviously, because the infrastructure was so old and so much development has been occurring in these areas, and that infrastructure has not been keeping up with that development. We know that there will be property owners displaced by this, and we certainly hope, we support the works going forward, hope that those people, those property owners, will be treated fairly by this administration, and we'll certainly keep a watchful eye on that process.
Further speakers? The Lord Mayor? I'll now put that, all those in favour, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee, please.
Caught me unaware, Mr Chair. I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2021 on matters usually considered by the Infrastructure Committee be noted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor McLaughlin, seconded by Councillor Lenders, that the report setting out the decisions, the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession of 2021 on matters usually considered by the Infrastructure Committee be noted. Is there any debate? Councillor McLaughlin.
Just briefly, Mr Chair, there were three petitions that were considered by ENC during this recess. I'm happy to participate in any debate on those issues, but otherwise, I'll leave it to the chamber.
Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin, I'll now put that, all those in favour of the report, please say aye. Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2021 on matters usually considered by the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee be noted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor Davis, seconded by Councillor Mackay, the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2021 on matters usually considered by the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please be noted. Is there any debate? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I'd like to join the Lord Mayor and other councillors in congratulating Councillor Cunningham on the birth of her second little man, Franklin, and I wish Councillor Cunningham and her husband and big brother Charlie all the best when little Franklin comes home. And in the meantime, I really hope that I can do my best to continue the very good work that Councillor Cunningham has been doing in this portfolio. Mr Chair, there are four items in the recess report. Item A is the formal naming of the park known as Alumba Street, 69 Souvler Street, Balmoral as Souvler Bay Park. I know this is an initiative supported by Councillor Cook, and I understand there was a special unveiling on Anzac Day with local residents who gather there to pay their respects each year. The park adjoins Souvler Street, and the park has been named in recognition of the landing at Souvler Bay. Item B is a petition objecting to the proposal to install a fenced dog-off-leash area within Waterfront Park Newstead. This is a project which has involved much discussion in consultation with the community, including a trial of an unfenced dola. Council acknowledges different community views on dog-off-leash areas, and I know that Councillor McLaughlin has taken this into consideration. Item C is a petition requesting council trial the removal of vehicles from the Ring Road at New Farm Park, New Farm. New Farm Park is one of Brisbane's most iconic parks, and the Ring Road for access and availability of car parking reduces parking and vehicle congestion from visitors to the area on surrounding residential streets. As a shared space, the Ring Road has a low speed limit to ensure safe and equitable use by motorists, cyclists, and pedestrians. As councillors may be aware, there are upcoming improvements to be delivered at New Farm Park to make it even more pedestrian, bike, and scooter friendly. The work includes pickup and drop-off area improvements, two pedestrian crossing points, lighting for safety, and a new green active travel entrance for pedestrians and cyclists at the original park entry on Brunswick Street. Finally, item D is a petition requesting council formally name the sports fields at Heathwood Park, 140 Parkwood Drive, Heathwood, as Matthew Conwell Sports Fields, in recognition of the late Matthew Conwell, who was heavily involved in Brisbane's sporting community, both cricket and football. This proposal has the strong support of the local sporting community and the local councillor, Councillor Owen. Thank you, Mr Chair. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I wish to speak on item A, the naming of Souvler Bay Park. Mr Chair, on Anzac Day, as you have just heard myself together with around 50 local residents officially named Souvler Bay Park and unveiled the new park sign in Balmoral. The residents of Souvler Street have been gathering in the street to commemorate Anzac Day for over 10 years now, and this year was extra special with the naming of the park. Mr Chair, the residents of Souvler Street first approached me back in November 2019 with the idea of renaming the park and making some improvements to the park itself. Last year, we were able to deliver the park improvements, which included some new seating. On Anzac Day, local resident, Mr Greg Cunningham, gave a very detailed history of the Battle of Souvler Bay, and I wanted to share a short part of that story with you today. He says, "The landing at Souvler Bay was an amphibious landing made at Souvler on the Gallipoli Peninsula in the Ottoman Empire. It was the final British attempt to break the deadlock of the Battle of Gallipoli, the landing which commenced on the night of the 6th of August 1915, supported by a breakout from the Anzac sector eight kilometres to the south. The landing at Souvler was to commence at 10pm, an hour or two after the two assaulting columns had broken out of the Anzac heading. Souvler was defended by three battalions under the command of a Bavarian cavalry officer, Major William Wilmer, whose task was to delay any enemy advance until reinforcements arrived. Wilmer had no machine guns and few field artillery pieces. When the attack at Lone Pine commenced, Wilmer was ordered to send one battalion as reinforcements, so that when 20,000 British began landing at Souvler, they were opposed by only 1,500 Ottoman soldiers. The landing did not go as planned from the start. The destroyers conveying the 34th Brigade anchored 1,000 yards too far south, facing Shoal Water and on the wrong side of the channel that drained the salt lake into the bay. Two boats grounded on reefs, and the men had to wade ashore submerged up to their necks. The 9th Battalion waded ashore in darkness and were pinned down between the beach and the salt lake by sniper fire and shelling. The CEO was shot in the head around dawn, and the 9th Battalion lost six other officers killed and seven wounded. Elsewhere, the landing was in chaos, having been made in pitch darkness, which resulted in great confusion, with units becoming mixed and officers unable to locate their position or their objectives. Later, when the moon rose, the British troops became targets for Ottoman snipers. Attempts to capture Hill 10 failed, because no one in the field knew where Hill 10 was. Shortly after dawn, it was found and taken. The Ottoman had withdrawn during the night. British War correspondent Ellis Ashmead Bartlett witnessed the landing shortly after dawn from the transport Minneapolis. While he could hear the fighting continue at Anzac, Souvler was comparatively quiet, and no firm hand appeared to control this mass of men suddenly dumped on an unknown shore. The British official history, written by Captain Seffol Aspinall Oglander, was blunt in its assessment. He said, "It was now broad daylight, and the situation in Souvler Bay was verging on chaos." The Royal Australian Naval Bridging Train, a 300-strong engineering and construction unit, landed early in the first day but was left without orders until late in the afternoon. One week later, on the 15th of August, a week after of indecision and inactivity, the British commander at Souvler, Lieutenant General Sir Frederick Stopford, was dismissed. The landing has been commemorated in several occasions by song. I thank Mr Cunningham for his time and contribution to ensuring the history of Souvler Bay was told not only to the local community, but also so I could share some of that here this afternoon. Mr Chair, I also wanted to share a bit of the background on how this naming came about. It is a day of firsts in this chamber. It's the first time that we've appeared via hybrid, but it's also the first time that I've actually ever had a petition response changed through People Power. Mr Chair, this item today is the end result of a petition. By way of background, some councillors in this place, or indeed perhaps residents, may not know how the petition process works in Brisbane City Council. In this case of Souvler Bay Park, a petition was initially started by myself as local councillor to respond to a community request for the naming. After we gathered the signatures and submitted the petition to council, a response was prepared by council officers and provided to me as the local councillor. This is something that often happens. It goes to the local councillor if it's a citywide issue, it goes to the Chair of the relevant committee. The local councillor then advises council if they support or do not support the petition response they have been provided. Quite often, Mr Chair, as I'm sure you know, I do not support petition responses where they do not adequately address the issue that petitioners have raised, or if the response does not achieve the actual outcome residents are seeking. I'm not actually sure, I can't recall any time an LNP councillor in this place has not supported a petition response in their local area when it comes to council for debate and voting, but this is something that myself and other councillors have done. So in this case, the council did not support the renaming of this park. And I wrote back and told council that I didn't agree with the decision. I liaised with my local residents, who also raised their concerns, with council having rejected their request. Sometime later, I got a phone call from Councillor Cunningham, who is the Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability, to advise that she had received my residents concerned, and that she too agreed that the petition response should be changed. We had a bit of to-ing and fro-ing on wording, but eventually we were able to have the petition supported, which resulted in the naming before us today. I give this very detailed history, because I think it's a timely reminder that draft responses to petitions don't always get it right, and it is our job to advocate for our local communities when they don't get it right. Ultimately, we debate these responses in council, and they're voted on every week to show which councillors do and don't support petitions. Obviously, because we have such an enormous LNP majority in this place, this is largely procedural, and I have never seen an LNP councillor break ranks to fight for their local community where a petition response clearly does not meet their community needs. In fact, Mr Chair, I've had LNP councillors contact me directly to tell me that they can't break ranks if they want to keep their LNP endorsement, and therein lies the problem of such a massive majority, where everyone falls into line and does what they are told, even if it's not in the best interests of their community, or what their community has sought through petition processes. I do want to acknowledge and thank Councillor Cunningham for responding to my community concerns and supporting the change in approach to this naming, and we will be supporting this item today. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise in support of the naming of the Matthew Conwell Sporting Facilities at Heathwood. This petition recognizes a young man that contributed so much to our city of Brisbane right across many areas. This petition has been supported by the Brisbane Super Kings Cricket Club, whose home ground is the current Heathwood Park. It is also supported by Queensland Cricket, Metropolitan South West Cricket Association, Kenmore Cricket Club, McGregor South Cricket Club, Redlands Tigers Cricket Club, South Junior Cricket Club, and also the Metropolitan South West Cricket Club. I think it's important that when we are naming a park, to honour the legacy of someone who has contributed so much to our city, that it is important to provide some personal reflections in relation to the person and how they interacted with the community. McGregor South Cricket Club, related to Matthew as being a smiling presence during the Woolworth Blaster programmes, and being the Brisbane Heat mascot, helping and supporting more kids and the love of cricket. When you consider the many clubs he helped, Matt was instrumental in establishing the Brisbane Super Kings Junior Cricket Programs at Heathwood. He was significant in the work and impact that he has had in relation to this and other cricket clubs in the junior realm across the southwestern corridor. I know personally that he has aided in the coordination of entry-level programs, promoted female cricket programs, provided support and advice for club health programs, and has been instrumental in volunteer recruitment, developing child protection policies, and helped in refurbishment and transformations of cricket clubs. But most importantly as well, that all of the cricket clubs that have submitted letters in support of this petition say that this naming is a fitting tribute to honour his legacy. South Junior Cricket Club also referred to him as "an amazing person who loved cricket", a trait that was highly infectious. One of his friends, James Cullen, who played cricket with him, has made three comments that I think are very personalised. "He was always making others feel good about themselves, inspiring them or picking them up when they had fallen. Matt was not just a good cricketer on the field, he was an inspirational leader. And Matt championed all and was invested and committed to improving those in his care or in his team." These are very strong, resounding endorsements of a young man, but I think it was the letter submitted by Matt's widow, who was pregnant with triplets at the time of his death, that sums up, in many respects, what this is all about. And I will quote Ashley's words, because I think she knew Matthew best. "I'm truly humbled by this gesture and wanted to write to you formally to endorse this petition. I also wanted to share some additional information, which I trust will provide council, with confidence in why these sporting fields should carry Matthew's name, and why Matthew is a worthy recipient of this honour. This petition continues to gain support from near and far, including local residents, the wider Brisbane community, and supporters from intra and interstate. You may be surprised..." You may be surprised to know that I have also been contacted by people in Matthew's network who live in New Zealand, Canada, the United Kingdom, asking if they too can sign this petition. This widespread support is a testament to the man that Matthew was and the impact he had on everyone that he met. Regardless of how long you knew Matthew, be that years, weeks, or simply hours, he always left a positively lasting impression. It is humbling to see that people genuinely want to see Matthew honoured in this way. Matthew was born and raised in Brisbane and his natural sporting ability was immediate. It wasn't long before his playing career started in both football and cricket, and he went on to make representative sides in both sports. It was no surprise that Matthew turned his passion into a career, graduating from Queensland University of Technology with a Bachelor in Applied Science, majoring in human movement before completing a Masters of Exercise Science, Strength and Conditioning with distinction at Edith Cowan University. Post-university, Matthew's coaching took on many forms, including Head Strength and Conditioning Coach, Strength and Conditioning Coach, and Assistant Coach across both cricket and soccer. Matthew coached and worked alongside incredible athletes, including the Queensland Bulls Cricket Team, the Queensland Fire Women's Cricket Team, and the Brisbane Royal Football Club's youth women's and men's teams, the Australian Under Seventeens Female Cricket Team, the Australian Intellectually Disabled Cricket Team, the Queensland Country Brahmins Cricket Team, the Redlands Tigers Cricket Club, where he was both a player and a coach. Matthew celebrated many victories with these teams, and his career highlight was in 2014, when the Brisbane Royal Football Club men's team were named national premiers and champions with Matthew at the helm as Head Strength and Conditioning Coach. The team were awarded the keys of the city with a ticker tape parade and ceremony here at Brisbane City Hall. While Matthew's coaching abilities are evident, I believe it was his most recent roles with Queensland Cricket and his involvement in junior cricket where his kind-hearted nature really shone through. He was once that junior player, and I believe that is why he was so passionate about creating an inclusive and fun environment for boys and girls of all ages. This is the man that will be remembered and celebrated. It is important to note that Matthew frequented the Heathwood Sporting Fields and was heavily involved in the development of the junior cricket club who used the ground. Given Matthew's career achievements, his contribution to the local community, and the fact that he was a talented and humble cricket and soccer player himself, I believe that it is very fitting the sporting fields proposed to be named in his honour include a cricket pitch nestled between two soccer fields. Matthew was a loving, genuine, humble, and loyal man who believed that the most beautiful things in life are not things, they are people, places, and memories. They are feelings, moments, laughter, and love. It is these values and belief that Matthew's name gives to these sporting fields, and to the community who will continue to enjoy these grounds for generations to come. The Matthew Conwell Sporting Fields will be a place for people to come together, to have fun, and most importantly, to create memories. They are beautiful words from his widow, Ashley, and I think they are important words to be in the public record, to honour his legacy, and to ensure that his three children know how much their father was loved right across our city and was a man that we will remember. I endorse the naming of the Matthew Conwell Sporting Fields at Heathwood.
Further speakers? Any further speakers, councillor Shree?
Thanks Chair. Just wanted to speak on the petition regarding parking in New Farm Park, and as an inner-city councillor, we've had similar discussions about park parking in my ward as well, and I hope the Lord Mayor will take the opportunity to look more closely at this issue going forward, because it's going to continue to come up. And there's a tension here, obviously, the council officers want to retain a bit of parking in these inner-city parks so that people who are travelling in from further afield can access those parks, and I understand that logic, but at the same time, having moving cars in a public park is very, very dangerous. It means that parents who would like their kids to be able to ride around on their little scooters and tricycles, et cetera, don't feel safe letting their kids loose in the park because there are cars driving through the middle of the park. Now, we've got the same issue over on Riverside Drive in West End and Davies Park in West End, and we're currently negotiating with council officers about some of those spaces to gradually remove or reduce the amount of car parking that's actually within the public park. And I'm sure councillor Howard is alert to the fact that it's very difficult to find land for new public green space in the inner city. It's very expensive to buy sites for new parkland. So at the very least, if that's proving too difficult for this administration, at the very least, converting existing bitumen into green space within parks is at least a good starting point. I've had a lot of debates and discussions with local residents about this, and the approach I strongly advocate and encourage other councillors to consider is to simply put out a community survey among your local residents and say, "How many of you would actually support a trial of reducing this car parking?" And that's all that this petition is asking for, it's only asking for a trial. And it is perhaps even open to council to trial it only on Sundays, for example, or only on Saturdays, or pick a certain day of the week when the parking is closed off, and see how that changes the way people use the public parks. So I think what you'll find is that you get a similar result to what we've had in West End along Riverside Drive, where by closing that roadway to cars and taking the parking out of that Riverside Drive parkland between Davies Park and Ollie Park, we've seen a massive increase in the number of people who are walking and riding and jogging and playing in that space. And councillor Howard, if you're still arming and ironing about this or thinking about the long-term plan for the park, I strongly encourage you to jump over to Riverside Drive in the vicinity of Victoria Street, and you can see how much more use that park is getting now thanks to the removal of cars. And certainly, I encourage all councillors who are debating this stuff to chat to residents in your local area, particularly families with young children, and ask them what they think. The current plans for the New Farm Park redesign or redevelopment are essentially spending a lot of money to partially mitigate and partially reduce the safety concerns that arise from having cars driving through the middle of a public park. There's the zebra crossings, there's a few other changes proposed, which cost a bit of money to make it slightly safer for pedestrians to move around and cross that internal ring road. It would actually be a lot safer for all concerned to simply get the parking out of the park altogether. An alternative option would be to simply take cars off the ring road but designate a corner of the park for parking. I don't think that's ideal, I think it would be better to get rid of cars altogether. But rather than having, when you look at the area of New Farm Park and the extent of the ring road, the volume of bitumen that's allocated towards parking as opposed to the volume of bitumen that's used for roadway and path, it's a significant disparity. So there's space to be gained even just by reallocating which parts of the park are used for parking. But yeah, I think long-term Brisbane's going to go in the same direction as most other growing cities, which is to remove car parking from public parks. That's what large, that's what growing cities do, is they find more and more people moving into the inner city and more and more demand for green space, and more and more concerns about the fact that young children on tricycles don't mix well with moving cars that are trying to parallel park and squeeze into parking spaces. Cities just gradually remove parking from public parks, and that's what I think should happen here in New Farm Park. And it's not my ward, I don't pretend to know it as well as councillor Howard does, but I do strongly encourage councillor Howard to at least hold a public survey, at least put it out to a community vote, because you've got a fairly large petition there. You've got, what were the numbers, nine hundred and something, is that right? Yeah, nine hundred and twenty-four signatures calling for parking to be removed from the park. That's a significant number of residents. That's not a small or niche or minority group. That's a fairly large chunk, that's almost a thousand people have signed a petition calling for parking to be removed. I certainly wasn't aware of this petition before it came to the chamber, it wasn't on my radar, so I expect there are a lot more people out there who would also have signed this petition if they knew it existed. And I realise that the administration's not in a hurry to make changes, but the petition's own response acknowledges that New Farm Park is reasonably well-served by public and active transport. There's a range of ways to get to the park without driving, and really, the point that I would put to councillor McLaughlin, and to councillor Murphy, and to councillor Howard, and councillor Cunningham in particular, is simply that while you might think that retaining car parking within the park improves accessibility for some people, it reduces accessibility for others. It makes the park less safe, less convenient, and less accessible for people with impaired mobility, for people with small children. So while some people might present parking and say, "Look, the parking improves access for people from other parts of the city," there are people from other parts of the city who would also appreciate if there wasn't a ring road in the middle of New Farm Park, and if they could freely move about that space without worrying that they're going to get hit by a car, or without so much space being taken up by car storage. Inner-city parking is always going to be at a shortage, there's never going to be enough parking to go around, but when you reduce the amount of car parking that's available for destinations like this, the evidence would suggest that actually more people start to use the space. It's a little bit counterintuitive, but that's definitely been the experience with Riverside Drive in West End. Taking away parking has led to more people using the park, it's made it more accessible for more people, and those people who might have to travel from a bit further away, they switch to public or active transport, or they find other places to park, and they walk that last hundred metres. So I know New Farm Park is peculiar in that it's a particularly prominent attractor, and people travel in from a lot of different places to access New Farm Park, but I think there is a very strong case here for at least trialling a partial reduction. You don't have to take all the parking out straight away if you don't have the courage to do that, but at least trial a partial reduction. There are many ways you could do this, you could do it simply by changing the timings, by closing gates on a Sunday, for example. Just try it for one Sunday a month, just one Sunday a month, close the gates to cars, and see how the park usage changes. And I think you'll find that people will embrace that change, and in the long term, it helps reduce traffic congestion because it discourages people from driving for non-essential activities. So if you take away that parking, people will adapt and find other ways to travel. That's what we've learnt from other similar projects in the inner city, and I hope that almost one thousand residents who've signed this petition aren't ignored entirely, and I hope that councillor Howard will at least put up a community survey, asking her local residents what they think about this issue.
Further speakers? Further speakers, councillor Davis. Oh, now, put the report, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Landers.
Councillor's received a petition requesting council remove the garden located outside of three hundred and eighty-eight Logan Road, Stones Corner, to allow small business signs be placed on the footpath without restricting pedestrian access.
Councillor Cook.
Thank you. I have a petition to fund and build an Elguri Street crossing to connect to Beverley Street in Morningside.
Anyone else? Any other, any petitions? May I please have a resolution to accept them?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second. It's been moved by councillor Landers, second by councillor Strunk. The petitions as presented be received and referred to committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Are there any statements required as a result of an office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Adaman.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about the commemoration of Anzac Day in the Pullenvale Ward this year, and to congratulate all involved for the respectful and dignified way in which those who have served in the defence of our country were remembered. It was again heartening to witness how an appreciative nation turns out each year to pay their respects to all who have fought, both living and deceased, over many campaigns. Brookfield was front and centre of Anzac Day commemorations in the western suburbs this year. To see the Brookfield Showgrounds packed with a crowd that police estimated to be eight thousand for the Anzac service was something to behold. And many of those stayed on for the annual Shell Green Cricket Match afterwards, but more on that in a minute. It was appropriate that Brookfield shone on Anzac Day, given the showgrounds was where a large number of horses were prepared before being dispatched to Europe to play their role in the Light Horse Brigade in World War One. There were other services in my ward at Mount Crosby which I attended, and at the Fairview Retirement Village, where an elderly resident, Brian Farrow, was the star of television news that night. His son, Scott Emerson, clearly inherited his media skills from Brian. It was unfortunate the dawn service at BellBarry and the traditional mid-morning march at Kenmore were postponed this year because of the challenges of contact tracing thousands of residents. And by the time the Premier dropped that requirement, it was too late to have them reinstated. It's a pity acting, Chair, that the unions didn't deliver their ultimatum to the government sooner, that they were going to be marching on May Day irrespective of any COVID-imposed rules. In conclusion, let me elaborate on Shell Green. During the battle at Gallipoli, Australian troops played cricket on a flat green to confuse the Turks. They in turn lobbed shells onto the field, hence the name. Each year, the Brookfield United Lord Mayor's eleven plays and Army eleven. Despite our impressive record in the ten years this game has been played, the Army prevailed this time. But being the good sport that he is, the Lord Mayor was gracious in presenting the trophy to Brigadier Blaine and accepting the runners-up trophy, which must now be displayed in his office for the next twelve months. Finally, my thanks to Lieutenant Colonel Rick Maath, the president of the Kenmore Mogul RSL, the executive of the Brookfield Showgrounds, and the many sponsors who helped ensure one of the most important days on our national calendar was honoured in such a way in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adaman. Further business, councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise again, I rise as well to speak in regards to the Anzac Day services that took place in my ward, and I'm sure there's not one councillor here that doesn't really appreciate the, what the RSL, whether it be a sub-branch, or even a community group, that undertakes this work to commemorate the service of men and women through all the conflicts that Australia has had to defend. This year, of course, I was over at Isa Park, right? Now, this is the only park like it in Australia. It's the Incapacitated Servicemen and Women's Association Park. It was built decades ago, and it's probably one of the nicest, smallest memorial parks in Brisbane. And I know that's, you know, I think probably some other councillors would disagree with me, but honestly, I sat down with one of the team members about eighteen months ago, and they were really disappointed, of course, the previous year was cancelled, because I do spend a lot of time and trouble in this small park just off of Vanalla Avenue, just up from the police station, and it is just gorgeous, it really is. And it was right, it was to perfection that morning. Now, the services, the service in the Vanalla area is undertaken by the Vanalla Lions Club, they facilitate it, and we have a parade from the shopping centre down and around a couple of streets, and then we end up at the park. Now, they've been doing this for well over twenty years, and that's a big commitment from any organisation, and of course, the Lions Club do some absolutely wonderful work in the Vanalla area. Now, this year, my speech revolved around a returned serviceman, and I digress a little bit. I got up at five AM and watched the dawn service on the TV. Sadly, I didn't get up that early that I could go into town to watch it in person, but I was watching it, and the governor was doing his speech, and he mentioned the very person that I was going to mention in my speech, and that person is Len Waters. Now, Len Waters, an unbelievable individual, the only Indigenous fighter pilot in World War Two. And you'd say, "Oh, that's a hell of an achievement," and I really didn't understand till a number, a couple of years ago, there was a biography written about Len, and they covered that pathway that he had from childhood to becoming the only Indigenous fighter pilot in World War Two, and how that all happened. It's quite a- II, and how that all happened. It's quite a lengthy story. It's about 300 or 400-page book. It doesn't cover, it covers his whole life. But it was just fascinating how, through just being, through just stubborn determination that he was going to fly. And then when the war came around, he was going to be a fighter pilot. And what he had to go through as an Indigenous man to get to where he got in the end was a testament to his mates that supported him all the way along. And they, for the majority, of course, they were white Anglo-Saxons. But they saw the talent in this man, and his determination to serve his country, and they backed him all the way. And it's a fascinating book to read, and I would recommend it. Now, as I say, he was the only fighter pilot during World War II of Indigenous makeup. And he flew 94 missions, which, you know, every one of those missions he may not have come back from, but he flew 94. It's just an amazing record that he has. A number of things, a number of towns, streets, bridges, posted stamps, and streets, I think I said, have been named after him. Recently, the Centenary Highway overpass was named after Len. And that's just recently opened up. He grew up in the back box of Queensland, right? But after the war, he decided to settle in Inala, which originally was called Serviston because it was for returned servicemen. And he lived, he lived and raised his family for about 33 years, I think it was, six kids. And sadly, he passed away in 1993. And I just recently caught up with a YouTube video that actually interviewed him prior to his passing. And that was a fascinating listen as well. Gladys, his wife still lives in Inala, and she's very proud of his service. But she was also in the, she became a driver during World War II for the American Army that was here in, and I believe it was Brisbane, there was a few Americans here during World War II. My uncle spent four years here, on and off, out to the islands, building things for the CBs. And he always spoke very, very fondly of his time here in Brisbane, when he was here and he wasn't overseas. So I just wanted to mention, I just wanted to put it on the record that one of our greatest heroes from my area that I look after now, and forced, that I'm honoured to look after, Len Waters. And we can't speak too much about our war heroes, and he was certainly one of the best. Now, another event that happened as well, only about a week or so ago, and that's the Day of Morning that the Vietnamese community hold at Freedom Place at Inala. And Dr Bowie and the chapter undertake this event every year, and it's a very moving event. Councillor Owen was there representing the Lord Mayor, and Henry Palich was there representing the Premier. They usually get all levels of government. We had a senator there. And that was really, it just goes to show you what respect that the, all levels of government have for the Vietnamese community, and have always had since their arrival in 1975. This year, they added another part of the memorial to honour the five generals who, after losing the war, took their own lives, actually, because they were, they, you know, they felt that they lost the war, and that was their ultimate sacrifice. And it was a very moving, very moving address when they read out the generals' records, and how they, you know, they started off really in potentially military colleges and things like that. But they were very young, and most of them were, when they passed on, took their lives, they were mid-40s. So they had a lot more years of life, and it's just a shame that they aren't with us today. And finally, I just want to also mention in regards to the candlelight vigil for the Indian community, or that was held by the Indian community here in King George Square yesterday afternoon. A very moving ceremony to try to give support to those people in India that are going through the COVID-19 pandemic. You know, there's over 200,000 that have perished through the pandemic, near 400,000 new cases a day in Australia, and this council, and all levels of government are going to put their hands in their pockets to help. Another Lord Mayor committed $10,000 for the cause yesterday afternoon, and I'm sure that's very appreciated. But they're really doing it tough over there, and of course, in Brazil as well. But there is so many, probably about a 5, 5% to 7% of my community is from the Somc continent. And so we've got a big contingent in my area, and they're all feeling it really tough. They're all making those phone calls. A lot of them are making those phone calls on a weekly basis to see how their friends and relatives are doing. And sometimes they get some really bad news. So I feel for them. I know my own home country, the United States, is still doing it tough, pretty tough as well. And every time I make that phone call to my sister and/or brother, I've got to ask the question, how are you? And are you positive with COVID? And thankfully, they haven't been, and they've been able to get their shots now. So with those comments, I'll finish. Thanks, Deputy Chair.
Thank you, councillor Strunk. And as a side note, there's a wonderful tribute to Len and Gladie in at Charltonville, and it is definitely worth visiting.
Is that the old museum?
Yeah. No, it's at the World War II Secret Air Base out at Charltonville. It's fantastic, absolutely fantastic. Further speakers? Ah, councillor Atwell, how are you?
I'm very well. Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise tonight to update the chamber on some of the exciting projects well and truly underway in the Doy Boy Ward. They say time flies when you're having fun, and we certainly are in Doy Boy. The Menippi Golf Course, Brisbane's first new public golf course in 70 years, is well underway. Last month, it was great to welcome back the Lord Mayor to the golf course, to roll out turf on the 13th green, and to tour the site. The course is taking shape and starting to look incredible. The final countdown to the first ball being teed off is well and truly underway. I've even had local brides ask me if they can book in their wedding date, and I know many are also excited by the extra recreational facilities such as Putt Putt and the driving range. And perhaps it might even be an Olympic venue if golf is included as an Olympic sport. The Lord Mayor and I are also excited to announce that it will be formally known as the Menippi Golf Course, rather than the internal name of the Cannon Hill Community Links. Menippi is a very special name out in the Doy Boy Ward, as it's named after the Indigenous elder, King Menippi, known as the king of the Tingalpa tribe, and he was also known as a bit of a larrikin in our area. We're also upgrading the Menippi Bike Way, thanks to the Morrison Government and Ross Vasta MP. This extension will better connect the golf course with the Cannon Hill Shopping Centre and the Murray Recreation Reserve. As we heard earlier from councillor McLaughlin, this reserve, or the Maza, as we call it out in Doy Boy, is undergoing massive upgrades to improve cycling opportunities for young and old, for our city. I also wanted to thank our Lord Mayor's commitment to our sporting clubs and community organisations. The installation of solar panels at five of my local community facility buildings is almost complete, with Lilian's Place in Carina to go. We all know that power bills is often one of the biggest expense for our clubs, and I'm excited to see their first power bill slashed from this exciting initiative. And lastly, I wanted to sincerely thank my local Rotary and Lions Clubs. Together this year, we've teamed up to undertake a number of community working bees, including Lilian's Place, the new YMCA building doing their fencing, the Carina Football Club, Carina State School improving their streetscape. So there's a lot to be excited about. But thank you, Lord Mayor, for your ongoing commitment to helping improve Doy Boy Ward. There's a lot going on, and even more happy residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further business? Councillor Huang?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise with great pleasure to speak on Srinagar Council administration's achievements in Magreka Ward since being re-elected last year. Mr Chair, at last year's council election, the people of Brisbane once again voted to re-elect an administration that is both visionary and competent to deliver for the people of Brisbane. As the councillor for Magreka Ward and a proud member of the Srinagar Council, I would like to take this opportunity to share with the chamber the great things the Srinagar administration has delivered in Magreka Ward, both with local and citywide benefits. Mr Chair, Mr Deputy Chair, last year, the world was very much dominated by the impact of COVID-19, so did Brisbane. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Lord Mayor for providing extra funding to each council ward to boost local projects. That is not only a boost to the local economy and local jobs, but also giving councillors an opportunity to fast-track park projects that gives our residents greater access to healthier public spaces. In Magreka Ward, it means more playgrounds and more exercise facilities. It also gave me the opportunity to fast-track my plan to build more barbecue facilities in my local parks. With the funding, I was able to build barbecue facilities in Trung Street Park, Mindona Street Park, Eberveil Street Park, and Wichita Community Park. That is in addition to the existing barbecue facilities throughout my ward. These facilities will provide local residents a place where they can spend quality time with their families, friends, and neighbours at no cost. Mr Deputy Chair, whilst the residents of Magreka Ward is enjoying these new facilities in their day-to-day life, there are more improvements happening that have citywide benefits. Mr Deputy Chair, there are two exciting projects that are currently progressing in Rochdale. They are the Metro Depot, which councillor Murphy mentioned earlier, and the Rochdale and Priestale Road intersection upgrade, which councillor McLaughlin mentioned earlier. The Metro Depot is a world-leading public transport depot with underground charging facilities that will be home to Brisbane's metro system, and a game changer that will totally transform Brisbane's public transport. And I'm proud to have it in Magreka Ward. Mr Chair, Mr Deputy Chair, the Rochdale Road and Priestale Road intersection upgrade is another significant infrastructure investment that is jointly funded by Brisbane City Council, the Australian Government. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Ross Vasta MP for the $40 million that he has been skewered for this project, and also Logan City Council. And once the project completed, it will replacing the existing runabout with a signalised intersection, which will greatly improve the safety of this intersection, which is shared by traffic between four schools during their pickup and drop-off times. Mr Deputy Chair, these are incredible achievements in a year, especially considering the interference of the pandemic on council's ordinary operations. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the hard-working council officers, and the leadership of the Lord Mayor, councillor Adrian Srinagar, and his competent administration team. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any other speakers for general business?
Yes, Mr Deputy Chair.
Oh, councillor Owen.
Thank you. I rise tonight to speak in regards to some local services, and particularly things that recognise people in our local community. Can I say that Anzac Day always brings out a level of respect right across our city, and particularly in our local communities? And I would like to acknowledge the many, many school students who have, in this day and age, shown honour and respect for those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, but also those who have served and continue to serve. The fact that at each of our local schools, Anzac services were held is very important. But it never ceases to amaze me at the effort that our young people put in to the Anzac services, from the many handmade wreaths that have been lovingly adorned by children from prep right through to year 12, but also for the way that these young people conduct themselves with reverence and respect. This in itself is a major legacy that I think we can be proud of students in our local community, and also right across our city. So I would like to say to all of the students of my local schools, Alchester State School, Calenvale Community College, Forest Lake State High School, Stretton State College, the Islamic College of Brisbane, Polara State School, St Stephen's School, Wisdom College, you have all done our community proud. And it is also very important that when we see our young people participating in the Air Force Cadet Catapult Party, as they did at the Calenvale Community College, then backing up at the Carrington Retirement Community, and also the St Stephen's Choir for the beautiful job that they did, seeing the Alchester Girl Guides out in force, ensuring that the community was served and respected as being ushers at some of the services, to the Alchester Scouts who performed the Catapult Party, for the important driveway service that was coordinated by Alan Price, former 4RAR serviceman, and also to the Defence Cadets, and also Corporal Andrew Dempsey, who were the Catapult Party and the Flag Orderly at the Forest Lake RSL War Dog Service at Dogs Queensland that councillor Strunk was also at. These young people are our future of our city and of our community. And to see them participating in such a professional and respectful way, I think is very important, and it's especially poignant for our veterans. And they do appreciate it. And as I always say, whenever I'm talking to our veterans, thank you for your service to those who have served and those who continue to serve. I would also like to reflect on the Vietnamese Day of Mourning as well, that I attended on behalf of the Lord Mayor, and was joined by councillor Strunk, and also, there was Jessica Pugh representing the Premier, and Senator Paul Scar. And I think that this sends a very positive message to the many Vietnamese community members that we have, that we recognise the circumstances that caused them to flee South Vietnam in their pursuit of freedom and democracy, and peace in their lives. I have a friend whose parents were on one of the first refugee boats that came from Vietnam. And in fact, she was the first child that Dr Quang Bui delivered here in his role as a doctor. And as we all know, Dr Bui is an integral part of the Vietnamese community here in Queensland, and particularly in southeast Queensland. And I just think it's amazing the amount that the Vietnamese community has given back, the amount that they share with the wider community, their hard work and effort, and their focus for the younger people to become part of that next-generation Australian. They have really embraced the start that they have been given here in Australia over the past 46 years. I also would like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the many members of our Indian community here in Brisbane that are currently finding it very difficult because of the large numbers of people who are being diagnosed with coronavirus over in India. I have had a very close friend who has lost her father on the 20th of April. I have had other close friends who have lost other family members in India in recent weeks as well. I have had staff of other friends who have lost their parents in India to coronavirus. When you hear numbers that on the 25th of April, there were 332,730 people diagnosed with coronavirus in India in one day, it is nearly unfathomable that we here in Brisbane, with our population of just 2.6 million people, that it is a very short period that the equivalent number of our city's population could be turned around and infected in a could be turned around and infected in a matter of days. And that is quite hard for us to get our heads around when we're talking numbers. But when we actually correlate it with our city's population, it's not hard to understand how devastating this pandemic is for many, many villages, many smaller communities, because they are all related. So once it starts getting out into those smaller villages in India, it is going to be quite difficult for them to turn it around. So I was privileged to be with the Lord Mayor and with Councillor Strunk and with the Honorary Consul for India, Chana Singh, representatives from the Federations of Indian Community Queensland and all their organisations that sit within that umbrella, and also GOPio last night to be there for that ceremony. Because it was a clear demonstration that Brisbane stands with India, that we know how difficult it is for our family here of our Brisbane residents, where they have other family members over in India going through this. So to all of my extended Indian family and friends here in Brisbane, we are with you. Brisbane stands with India, and we are here to care and support you all. On Elijah night, I would like to take this opportunity to say to the chamber that in the Lord Mayor's Australia Day Awards, the Way Smart City Smart Awards, young Manny Finlay received the People's Choice Awards. And Councillor Adams will recall how excited young Manny was. Well, on Friday, this Friday night, it is the Channel 7 Young Achievers Award, and Manny is a finalist. So it will be a privilege to host him and his parents at this very important awards night. And can I say that Manny is really doing great things out there? He has a part-time job with sewers, and he is working to keep the sewers depot extremely clean. And he is a young man who is not letting circumstance dictate the way he wants to live his life. He is out there focusing on his job. And the last thing I would just like to leave everybody with is this Sunday is a special day. It's Mother's Day. So to all the mothers out there, I wish you all a happy Mother's Day. And to people who are missing their mothers this Mother's Day, they are never far from our hearts. They are always there. Thank you.
Any further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. A couple of brief issues. Firstly, I also wanted to share my sorrow regarding what's happening in India and the really high number of coronavirus cases and deaths. Yeah, I've got quite a few friends over there as well, and it really is tragic. I'm also quite outraged about what's going on over there. And I hope that other councils, if you're not already aware of this issue, will take a moment to read up about the global debates around vaccine patenting. Because what's happening at the moment is that the majority of countries around the world are actively lobbying for some of the vaccine patents to essentially be suspended so that vaccines can be mass-produced without having to pay for the intellectual property rights. This is an ongoing debate in medical research and pharmaceutical circles. Essentially, what happens is that public money is used to research a new vaccine, but then a private company will patent the vaccine and will then limit who is allowed to manufacture and distribute that vaccine and to what numbers. And unfortunately, to our nation's great shame, Australia has been one of the countries that has been advocating against that temporary suspension. So Australia is certainly not the only country guilty of this. A lot of the European nations, USA, UK, et cetera, are also part of this cartel of wealthy nations that are actively arguing against policy changes which would allow COVID vaccines to be mass-produced more cheaply and more effectively. They're not doing this out of concerns about the quality of the vaccines being produced. There's no suggestion that it would allow slippage in terms of the reliability or quality of the vaccines. It's simply because the large pharmaceutical companies own the intellectual property for those vaccines. They patented those vaccines, and they don't want to let countries like India mass-produce the vaccine without paying licence fees or what some have sort of called royalties back to the companies that own those patents. So it's certainly beyond the remit of this local council. But I encourage all councillors, if you're feeling sad about what's happening in places like India, please take a moment to look at Australia's position regarding the patenting of the COVID vaccines and the fact that Australian federal government policy is playing a part in preventing the rapid manufacturing and distribution of more COVID vaccines. It's certainly not the only reason for the outbreak in India. There's been some terrible management from the Modi government, and the Indian federal government has just done an appalling job all round of managing the outbreak. But one factor is that governments like, nations like India have struggled to vaccinate such large populations in a short space of time because of arbitrary restrictions that have been imposed upon the manufacture of those vaccines. So countries like South Africa have been arguing against that system. There's, I think, around 100 nations have been arguing that we shouldn't, that we should be relaxing those patents and temporarily suspending those patents. There's a similar issue involved in the rolling out of widespread COVID testing. So basically, large pharmaceutical companies are putting their own profits and their own commercial interests ahead of the global imperative to vaccinate people from COVID as quickly as possible. And I think it's really tragic and really shameful. And I urge all councillors to inform yourselves about that issue and speak up. Just a little closer to home, I wanted to again speak up about the importance of safe pedestrian infrastructure and safe bike lanes around the inner south side. In the last couple of months, we've seen very, very rapid uptake of e-scooters. And yeah, particularly e-scooters, also e-bikes and bicycles in general. But it almost seems as though we had a few months there of people getting used to hireable e-scooters like Lime and Neuron. And now, I think, as other councillors have alluded to earlier today, lots of people are buying e-scooters for themselves. And I'm seeing really high usage of e-scooters, particularly on footpaths around Highgate Hill, round West End, round South Brisbane. Previously, a lot of people would have looked at Highgate Hill and said, oh, it's too steep for bikes. That's probably not a high priority for active transport infrastructure. But I'm now seeing more and more e-scooter riders and e-scooter bikes climbing directly up the Highgate Hill slopes with battery-assisted rides. And I think that really strengthens the case for separated bike lanes because those footpaths are quite narrow. We've already got fairly high volumes of pedestrians in some of those inner-city areas. So we're seeing more and more concerns being raised by people that pedestrians are having to share narrow footpaths with e-scooters as well as bicycles, et cetera. So I know there was some debate a little while ago about Dornock Terrace. I remain very open to working collaboratively with the administration to get a concept design for bike lanes and pedestrian crossings along the Dornock Terrace corridor so that we can make that space safer for pedestrians, for bikes, and for motorists. I think that's a really pressing priority now. Dornock Terrace is part of the River Loop, and we're seeing so many cyclists using that in the mornings for recreation riding, but also more and more commuter cyclists and e-scooter riders using it to get to work or to get to school or to the local shops. So, Councillor Adams, through you, Deputy Chair, you know a lot about this issue, and you received a lot of correspondence about it at the time. And I know your temptation will be to say, oh, it's not my portfolio anymore. I don't have to worry about it. But this goes directly to the question of city planning because every time your team approves more high-density developments down in those parts of West End and Highgate Hill...
Councillor Sri, through the chair, please.
Through you, Deputy Chair, yep. We get more and more traffic congestion. We get more and more cars using those roads because we haven't provided safe alternatives for people. So people who are moving into suburbs like West End and Highgate Hill, they want to ride, they want to walk for transport, and they live close enough to their places of work and recreation that that's possible if we put in the pedestrian crossings and the bike lanes. So obviously, I'm encouraging Councillor Murphy to look at this closely. And apparently, Councillor Allen, as the Chair of Finance, is somehow responsible for the budget. I write to Councillor Allen. I raise this with Councillor Allen, and he'll say, oh, through you, Deputy Chair, it's up to the mayor. And then I'll raise it with the mayor, and he'll say, thanks. I'll pass it on to Councillor Allen. I must say, it does seem like I get a bit of a runaround there where I'm still not 100% sure whether it's the mayor or Councillor Allen who's responsible for deciding whether those bike lanes get funded. But the message very clearly is that we need those bike lanes to be funded because lives are at stake. And so Dornock Terrace in Highgate Hill is a particularly high priority, especially that intersection of Hardgrave Road, Ganges Street, and Dornock Terrace, which is a sharp bend. You'll talk to your own bus drivers. They'll tell you how dangerous that feels for them. It's certainly not a compliant intersection. We've got large numbers of schoolkids crossing there unassisted. But also Volcher Street running through West End to South Brisbane, that's a key connector between West End and Wollongaba that's only going to become more important over time as the Cross River Rail Station in Wollongaba comes online, and we see more works associated with the Olympics, et cetera. So Volcher Street bike lane, Dornock Terrace bike lanes, and the pedestrian crossings that accompany these projects are really becoming pressing priorities, not just for residents of my wards, but residents from across the city who travel into West End, who travel into South Brisbane, and who complain to me about the fact that the footpaths feel too crowded with e-scooters. These are residents of the outer suburbs, they're residents of Marchant Ward, they're residents of Walter Taylor Ward, they're residents of Calenvale Ward, who are coming into West End and South Brisbane and who would also benefit from improvement to separated bike lanes and safe pathways and safe crossings in the inner city. So I'm asking the council administration to very seriously consider prioritising funding for these projects. We've already done the initial consultation. We've already had the community conversations about how much street parking residents are or aren't willing to lose. And we've had those debates at length. And I'm willing to stick my neck out and work collaboratively with the administration and defend those decisions when we need to if we can get some good designs with safe barriers, separated bike lanes, and dedicated pedestrian priority crossings. There's a really good opportunity here to transform the inner south side and make it a genuinely walkable neighbourhood. And that physical infrastructure is a really big part of that. So I hope the administration understands that this isn't just me advocating for the interests of my own residents. This is me saying that suburbs like South Bank, suburbs like West End are hubs for employment and for thousands of workers from across the city. So when we invest in infrastructure in those areas, it's not just about a couple of John O'Shares local residents. It's about thousands of people from across Brisbane who are riding into suburbs like West End for work or for recreation, who will benefit immensely if we can take some of those cars off the road and make it safer for people to travel by active transport. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor. Is there any further general business? I see no one standing to their feet or anybody waving at me from a screen, so therefore I declare the meeting closed.